Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, April 21st, 2022, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And with that, I'd ask everybody to please join me in a... Oh, wait, first I have to read the note in accordance with Executive Order N-2920. The Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually, and you can go on the county website to look at the different ways you can join us, and you can also join us in person, as we have a few people here tonight, which is nice to see. And with that, I'd ask everybody to join me in salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trip, I take a roll call, please.
Alan Bongio?
Present.
Noah Levy? Brian Mitchell? Mike Newman?
Present.
Melanie McCaver? Peggy O'Neil?
Here.
And Thomas Mulder?
Present, virtually.
All right. Thank you. So, we squeaked by having a quorum. We have four, so the meeting will go on. Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, good evening, Chair. Thank you. There are a number of supplementals that were sent out this week, and there were some that were sent out late today. I apologize for that. We're still getting into the routine of not sending things out on Thursday. We have modified our notices to let people know that if they send it in on Thursday, we won't send it out. But I do want to bring your attention to item J2, the Bloxburg Family Farms LLC. We're going... We have received some comments on this that we'd like to spend some time responding to, and so we're asking the Commission to continue that to the meeting of May 5th.
All right.
Since this is shown on the agenda, you do need to have that done with opening the hearing.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else, or is that it?
That's it.
All right. I don't know if it's the right time, but I'd like to take a second and just remember the memory of one of our fellow Planning Commissioners, Dave Edmonds, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. Spent a lot of time given to this community and especially to this Planning Commission. He was a great guy. He'll be missed, so, thank you.
I have to agree with that, Alan. He was a fixture and good, steady hand in the community. I'll miss Dave.
Yeah, he was a great guy.
Chair, sorry for the interruption. Could we pause for a few minutes? Evidently our Zoom link is not working right now.
Okay.
We have audio, but no video right now. We have audio, but no video. Is... Do we know what? We're working on it.
I'm reading everything as per the Commission.
It just... Something just came up. So, okay? We're good to go? So, bear with us. We may have some technical difficulties, but they're on it. All right. So, with that, we'll move to item number D, public comment. This is the time when anybody can speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So, if you would like to speak, if you're in the audience, come up to the podium, and you get three minutes, and if you want to call in, it's the same. So, it looks like I got one hand up. Public 5288, go ahead.
Ken Swazki, I'm back from Mexico. Flew in today, fortunately, to be able to have time for this meeting. There seems to be... I have some concerns here in how the politics are being handled regarding certain ones of the members of your Commission. In my opinion, and the opinion of many people in the public, Melanie McCaver was... Tried to be removed, I guess, is what you'd say, and I really find it just because someone doesn't agree with certain politicians doesn't mean that they necessarily are not serving good. And Dave Edmonds was a fantastic one. He was not... He was apolitical. I don't think he went with the whims or will of any potential bullying by supervisors or anything like that, so I do have great respect for Dave, and I appreciate you memorializing him this evening. I do wish to caution Planning Commissioners especially about possibly being, again, public perception, complicit to the removal of other members through other means. This is something that should not happen. Everybody should have their opinions, and just because not agreed with that person should not be, in my opinion, by a... Specifically by a Commissioner or Supervisor and group between them. I did also wish to mention that I think I've gotten... I haven't received it yet, but I think it was about eight weeks ago, I was promised a reason and a determination on the kinetic sculpture race of status, and I question, you know, anything. This allegedly came up before the Coastal Commission was formed, supposedly grandfathered in, but we don't even know. We don't have any proof of where this particular project was, where there were 20 participants. Now there are 200 participants, 2,000. Anytime a project or anything changes in scope or amount of effects on the environment, that's a new project, and I will be dealing with that a little bit later. I tried to reach out to John, didn't happen. Haven't had time to see the proof for the termination, but it did, I think, came out on Monday or something, is what I've told my people who had access to it. So, that'll be something I think we need to discuss. I think we have another project on here, Reggae on the River, which probably is a changing project, and it gets readjusted frequently, and that's what you're doing tonight, I think, in this one, I'm guessing, but that is a concern to me, anything when you have a project and it expands in size or scope, should be readressed. That's just my opinion. Thank you for my chance to speak tonight, and I look forward to participating in the rest of this meeting.
Thank you, Kent. Next caller is Public 7108.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to follow up on the ordinance about covering up the greenhouses, the night sky protection, that in my watershed of reporting that this was happening, and then it took, you know, like, two weeks before I ended up calling back on the last day that these people were supposed to respond, and I was told that the operation had been transferred to a new operator back in January, and that the new operator didn't know he was supposed to cover him up. And when I asked about, well, what's the consequence of that, because it's been going on for a few months, and I was told that, you know, it was that, you know, he didn't know that he was supposed to do it, there wasn't going to be any penalty. And I'm wondering in my mind, well, what else in that permit that's required does he not know about? And what kind of excuse is that? And if there's no consequence, like, no problem. So, I just wanted y'all to hear how it needs dealt with. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Are there any other callers that wish to speak on public comment? Is there anybody from the audience that wishes to speak on public comment? Please come up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Carson Morrison. I'm from Dulick.
Is it?
I'm from Dulick. Lived here about 20 years. Got two kids in school here. Is tonight the night that we're to talk about 5G towers? Is that...
Well, that's agendized, so that you shouldn't... This is for things that are not on the agenda. So, when we get to that item, you can... You'll have your opportunity to speak.
Okay. All right. So, not now?
Not now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak? All right. See you none. I'm going to close the public comment, and we'll go to consent calendar. And so, as usual, we have a lot of new faces in the audience, so we will go through the consent calendar, and anybody who wishes to have an item pulled from the consent calendar, just raise your hand, and then we'll have it... We'll pull it, saying, on the Commission. So, as we go through the first two items, number one, MDRV Realty Holdings LLC, conditional use permit and special permit, it's already been recommended to be continued, so we will take care of that when we're voting. And number two, the MDRV Realty Holdings LLC Special Permit II will be continued to the May 5th as well, so we'll be addressing those and moving them to that date certain. So, the first one that will be on tonight's will be the Dustin Silva Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled? See you none. We'll leave that on consent. Next one would be item number four, Dustin Silva in the Garberville area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this one pulled? There's two that are under this person's name, just so you know. Oh, we do have public, so we're going to pull number four. Number five, Bowden Wood Project in the Garberville area. Looks like we have a hand up, so it'll be pulled. We have a hand up. Number seven, Reggae on the River. Anybody who has a hand up? Nope. Okay. That was number seven, and number eight is Proposed Communication Facilities Ordinance. And we already had somebody come up in the audience. Do you want this pulled for discussion?
Carson?
No, do you want... Just raise your hand if you want this item pulled, I'm assuming, since you wanted to speak on it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll pull. So, all right. So, that means items number four, number five, number six, and number eight were pulled. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items number one, number two, number three, number seven, and I believe that was it?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? That Thomas isn't... I don't see his hand come up, so...
I'll second.
All right. So, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? See you none. Trip? Roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. So, with that, we will go to the first one, item number four, which was pulled, Dustin Silva in the Garberville area, so take a staff report.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry I had to rejoin as a panelist. So, this project... My presentation is actually for the combination of the two projects, but it appears we just... We left 13264 on consent.
Yes.
So, I'll focus on 13266 only. 13266 is known as the Upper Property, and this is the project that's closest to Dyreville Loop Road, and it consists of 175-acre legal parcel, shown as two separate APNs in the HUMWEB GIS system. This project is 15,840 square feet of existing outdoor cultivation. The water is derived from three registered points of diversion, and all are subject to full forbearance during the summer seasons. Water storage consists of a shared pond that is on this property, but the pond water is shared with the upper... The lower and the... Between the upper and lower properties as well. And that pond is approximately 487,500 gallons, and it's a rainwater ranch pond that's very much used for the ongoing cattle ranching on the properties, but some of the water is diverted for tanks, and there's almost 200,000 square feet of tanks and bladders. And water use is approximately 182,000 gallons, so between the ponds and the existing tanks and bladders, there's more than enough water storage available to enable full forbearance from the diversions. And there would be three employees potentially at any one time on both the lower and upper properties. You can see the map here. This project is northeast of Garberville in the New Harris area, and you can see the lower property, which is the subject we're discussing here, is located on what's shown as four separate parcels, but it's one legal parcel here. Dyreville Loop Road is the access point, which connects to Alderpoint Road and goes west to Garberville. And I just wanted to point out some selected conditions of approval, the main one being an alternative energy plan. These are all outdoor cultivation sites, however, there is energy use for drying and for nursery, string lights, and that sort of thing, water pumping. The applicant has agreed and is conditioned to develop an alternative energy source on the parcel within three years of project approval, so that'd be by... Well, this would be April. I'll adjust this date. And is 2025. It is capable of supplying 80% of the energy demands of the operation. In addition, based on comments from Public Works, the access improvements may be necessary for the project, including fences and gates relocated outside of county right-ofways, driveways and road intersections, et cetera, comply with the site visibility ordinance. The applicant is conditioned to abide by the site management plan recommendations for the both properties. And this last point related only to 1326. Because their owner or operators, we recommended striking Condition of Approval A9 from that project, which is left on consent. So, I'm not too clear what power we might have in removing a condition that's on consent. But that concludes the presentation for 13264.
Director, do you have any thoughts on what maybe we should do on that last point that he made, A9, since it was on the one that we approved on consent?
Well, I think that action, unless you want to rescind that, has been taken.
Okay, so there's nothing...
Right.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any questions for staff? Should I mic off? Nope. Just wasn't... I didn't have it over in front of me. Sorry about that. So, with that, I will open up the public comment then on this, and the first caller is 5288.
So, this project was just presented different than it's described. I didn't pull number three. I considered pulling it. Number three had a basically 10-kilowatt generator, applicants to develop solar power infrastructure to operate artificial ice, et cetera, pump system including required for domestic deeds. There's nothing in there that says 80%. I mean, that should be in there. It said within three years. You go down to the next one, and you read this, basically, again, generator provide powerhouse in a shed behind existing 34-by-40 rhythm. Solar panels are proposed to be installed to offset generator use, and it doesn't say 80% here. It's also confusing. It doesn't say how soon on this particular one. It said it on the other one. I just wish we would have consistency, especially when you have two projects that are... Should be tied together, as they were in the presentation, should have been considered together, as they were in the presentation. And I just question why, you know, why we have something in here that doesn't fully disclose to public, that it makes it sound like it's going to be good solar, but it's only 80%. Then you're bundling in a residential use with a commercial use, and that is a little bit of a problem also there, as far as I'm concerned. So, that addresses my thing. The other thing here, I did see in this consists of these bladders, and I really was not aware... In fact, I've received quite a bit of comment before from other people that they were not able to use bladders. I assume these bladders have a full system where they're to rupture or something, they're in full containment, but again, that doesn't say here. So, that bladder thing is not a common thing that I've seen, so I did question why that was a storage technique. And again, it does... None of these mention the lake in there, as far as your description that I have a chance to read without delving totally into the reports. All those things I think are pertinent and should be considered, and again, all of these projects of this nature should have been bundled as one project, and then probably you wouldn't have to possibly unwind your consent item and go back to change things that you're changing now. That's just a recommendation on these. Thank you for my opportunity to speak, and if you don't want a full staff report, I don't need them on anything I've pulled, you may just reach out to the public, and if there's only one hand up, and it happens to be mine, I might just have one question that I was unable to get answered today. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you, Kent. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this topic? Public 9764.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioner Bongio, and here is the Chair. Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Jan Elson, and I am an environmental planner with North Point Consulting. Craig White and the applicant, Mr. Dustin Silva, are also on deck, and we just wanted to say we're here to answer any questions that come up. I could respond right now to the comments that were just made, or if there are any other public comments, I can respond at the end.
I'd say respond to them now. There is nobody else with their hand up at this point.
Okay, great. So, Jordan, thank you for your presentation. One note there is that the pond that was mentioned is actually not shared between those properties. It is only a water source for the lower property, so there is no supposed existing pond that serves water to this upper property. All water is sourced from surface diversions with appropriate water storage covered under a registered small irrigation use registration. With regard to the generators, I believe the applicant is actually prepared to transition 100% to solar within three years. I know that's the plan on the lower site, and that is also the plan on the upper site. So, the plan is to get completely off of generators, and there's minimal power usage anyway, because it's all full sun or light depth, and processing is off-site. With regard to the bladders, we do not see a condition in here to get off of bladders. However, if that is the planning department's policies, the applicant is prepared to do so. We can also maintain compliance with State Water Resource Control Board requirements for bladders and construct 150% containment around the bladder. So, 100% solar, no pond as a water source, and we're welcome to projections regarding the bladder. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any Commissioners that have questions for her, why we have her on with us? Nope. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I see we have a panelists... Thomas, maybe he has a question. Go ahead, Thomas. Oh, Jordan Mayer is who had their hand up. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I just wanted to point out that Condition A15 is the alternative energy plan that details the date, and the supply would be 80% of the energy demands, and Condition A9 is the retirement of the bladders, which is already in there. So, it seems one of the callers with those comments did... Perhaps was confusing with another project.
All right. Thank you, Jordan. Any other questions before I close public comment? All right. See you none. I'm going to close the public comment and bring this back to the Commission. What's the thoughts of the Commission?
I'm ready to make a motion.
If you'd like to.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we find that the Planning Commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigation negative declaration for the Commercial Medical Marijuana Land use ordinance as described by Section 15164 of the State Sequel Guidelines. Make all the required findings for the approval of the conditional permit and approve the Dustin Silva project as recommended by the staff, subject to the recommended conditions, which includes the implementation of 80% renewable use within three years.
All right.
Under 8515 or whatever it was.
Thank you, Peggy. Is there a second?
I'll say, Kent, that Chair.
Thank you, Thomas. Any further discussion on it? See you none. Trip? Roll call vote, please.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Trip. All right. That brings us on to item number five, which is Bowden Wood in the Garberville area. Take a staff report, please.
Thank you, Members of the Commission. My name is Cliff Johnson. I'll be presenting this application. I'm going to try to share my screen here so we can start the presentation. So, this application is for a special permit for a combination of existing cannabis cultivation and new cannabis cultivation. Both would be outdoor cultivation, and the total would be 43,000 square feet. You can see here on this slide, the project site is east of the Cooks Valley area, south of Bimbo. Richardson's Grove is just to the... Sorry, project site's west, but Richardson Grove is just east of this project site. The, as you can see, 17,715 square feet is existing, and that existing cannabis cultivation requires a special permit, both for just the size of it, but also portions of that are located on slopes between 15 and 30%, and under the second cannabis ordinance, which this is under, that does also require a special permit. Just over 25,000 square feet would be new, and again, that would be outdoor primarily Just over 25,000 square feet would be new, and again, that would be outdoor primarily, I believe, light deprivation. And there is a 4,200 square foot nursery that's proposed. Approximately 385,000 gallons of water would be required annually, and there is an existing 538,650 gallon rainwater catchment pond. Power would be provided by solar arrays with a generator on site for backup only in emergencies. And there is an existing 700 square feet shed that is used for processing, and they are proposing an 1,800 square foot building to also be utilized for the expanded operation for processing. This is the applicant's site plan. I'm going to move into the satellite image in a minute, which I think will clarify some of the locations of these things, but the existing cultivation is up in the northern portion. There's the existing pond there, and I do want to note, there is a proposed pond on this site plan. We are not recommending that it be approved at this time. There has not been the proper engineering analysis done to grant them an entitlement for that pond. This shows the satellite image of the site, you can see the existing cultivation up in the northern area, and so that's, portions of that are on 15 to 30% slopes. And then the bulk of the new cultivation would be down in this flat area here, if you can see. So there's a number of technical studies that were prepared for this, as required under the second cannabis ordinance. One of the primary points of interest on this project has been the proximity to northern spotted owl habitat. In particular, there is a spotted owl activity center approximately a half mile to the south, and there's a history of spotted owl sightings in the greater forested area. There was a comment that was submitted yesterday by a neighboring property owner to the south that was submitted to the planning commission, who has pointed out that he has actually personally witnessed spotted owl as recently as 2020 on his property. And so in this image here, I just wanted to point the commission to the contiguous forest area, and you can start to kind of see a darker conifer area to the south and a little bit to the east. That would be where there is a much higher density of documented spotted owl sightings. There was a comment that was received from CDFW in June of 2021, and they were concerned that perhaps approval of this project would not be consistent with the EIR and the mitigation measures that were adopted for the EIR for the second cannabis ordinance, because this is within 1.3 miles of a spotted owl activity center. But what I wanted to bring your attention to is the mitigation measure itself states that if the area is within suitable habitat for northern spotted owl and is within 1.3 miles, then there are following measures which would be, need to be followed, and that does include the prohibition on new cannabis. In this, on this site, we have received a report from a qualified spotted owl expert, biologist with a lot of experience, who states that this particular location is not actually spotted owl habitat, and that was provided to you by that supplemental that was submitted yesterday. I believe he may also be in the audience and be willing to speak a little bit more to that. So with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any commissioners that have a question for staff? Go ahead, Mike.
Just a question, Cliff, you had said something about the pond, is that in the conditions here that it won't be developed until certain things happen?
Thank you, Commissioner, and that is not in the conditions, but we did not describe it in the project description either, and so it would not be considered part of the entitlement. They would need to come through and do a modification or some other, well, it would be a permit modification to get an entitlement to build that pond. The existing pond at just under 600,000 gallons appears to be enough to provide their irrigation needs.
But the other pond was just in some drawings or something, is that why you brought that out?
It is on the approved site plan, or, sorry, on the site plan that was submitted.
Okay, thank you. That was, I was going, hmm, okay, thank you.
Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
I raised my hand for this project as well. The supplementals we were forwarded yesterday was concerning to some degree. I read through it a couple of times because at first it was really confusing, so when I read through that original timber assessment, it spoke in there about potentials for NSOs, so then I read through the biological assessment, and I read through it multiple times, and I didn't see any owl hooting that actually taken place, it was just the resource or the land assessment. So if we could get some clarification why staff didn't ask for any hooting, because I know of many people that have had to do hooting, so I'm just a little confused there.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Sure thing, thanks, Commissioner Mulder. So the timber assessment that was submitted by the property owner who holds property immediately to the south was a timber assessment for his property. And so when, and that assessment did state that in order to log the property, they would need to do a number of years of owl surveys. So we were considering that that is separate from this particular property, and in this particular property, we do have an assessment from a biologist who states that this is not spotted owl habitat, and I believe in his opinion, the spotted owl habitat is more to the south.
I have a question.
My apologies, I must have crossed up some APNs on that because I thought at one point in time, this current APN was part of that assessment, but maybe I misread it. Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Thomas.
I just want some clarification on the same subject. So a neighbor says there is spotted owl and has seen the spotted owl. It was mapped by the northern spotted owl activity center as being an area for spotted owl, but the applicant hired NorCal Bio Surveys who says it isn't, is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
Well, I don't think that there's disagreement necessarily because we're talking about two different areas. The property to the south of the project site is a little bit different forest habitat, and so the biologist for this project site is saying that the particular project site and where the cannabis is proposed and the existing cannabis is not, would not qualify as spotted owl habitat. But I don't think there's any disagreement that the area to the south is.
Just all looking at it differently. Okay.
All right. Oh, Brian has his hand up, so I guess he joined us late. Welcome, Brian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just received notice that Commissioner Levy wasn't available to attend, I wasn't planning on being on this particular meeting, but I did have a chance to look at the supplemental, and just wanted to ask about the corridor for the NSOs. Do we have any reason to believe that they travel over or through this, and do we, have we looked at the noise impacts on the spotted owls? Thank you.
I don't believe that we have any information that would indicate whether there's spotted owls would fly over the property or not. Regarding noise, this is an outdoor operation, and it will be on solar power, so the, both the noise and the light should be minimal. I will note that under the second cannabis ordinance which this is under, they were required to do a 24-hour noise study at the property lines, and under the ordinance, they will be required to be no more than three decibels above what the ambient noise was while in operation. The assessment from the spotted owl biologist did conclude that there should not be any impacts to the species from operation of this cannabis project.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you, Cliff. Any other questions for staff before I open it up for public comment? All right, seeing none. I will now open this up to the public, and possibly the person who did the spotted owl study could speak, that's where most of the questions have been. But is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? 7108, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Bonnie.
Okay, yeah, looking through this, I also read through it a few times because it was kind of confusing, starting off with the project description, which is saying 43,000 square feet, and then when you end up in the findings, the findings are talking about 36,505 feet, and the existing in the findings and also in the Department of Fish and Wildlife report was, the existing was 10,870. So, and throughout this document, you have different numbers, and if, anyway, there's that consistency. I'm also concerned about the lack of an energy plan, and the 2.0 says must be exclusively renewable, not 80%. And I didn't see on the site plan anywhere where there was the solar panels or the generator. So, and I think you have to have them really together to do all this stuff they're planning on doing. I'm also concerned about the Department of Fish and Wildlife comments about protecting the spotted owl, and the fact that the county is considering ignoring that. Also, the noise assessment depends on, you know, where you take it, if you take it in a free time when the wind is blowing and it's stormy, you're going to get one assessment. And if you take it another time when it's quiet and it's not windy, then you get another assessment, and the thing of averaging that out, I just really don't think it protects the wildlife and does what it's supposed to do. Let me see if I have any other items. Yeah, well, the inconsistencies of the size and what was existing, and the documents stating it's windy, and then you have other documents saying it's something else. So, those are my comments, thanks.
Thank you. Next caller is 7224. Next caller, 7224. Star six to unmute. There you go.
Hello, how are you doing? Another big grow, wow. I don't think the board of supervisors or even the planning commission understand that the majority of the people of Humboldt County do not want mega growth. Now that being said, it's pretty clear that there needs to be some serious change going on here, and for the county staff to be just saying that spotted owl and birds don't fly around this area, they use the sky to move from point A to point B, is pretty egregious. And I'm pretty sure none of them have a degree in what birds do. So, to this point, I do not support disexpansion. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. Next caller, 5288.
Mike, this is a question, I guess a point of order. Before I make my public comment, is it possible for us to hear the spotted owl expert? Because I'm having a hard time, you know, not making comment after I hear what I can't believe actually can be justified. So is, how is this to work, Alan? Is it possible to hear that first, or should I make my comments now?
If that person is with us, I'll let them speak, and then I will let you speak again, but keep it short when you speak the second time, Kent.
Thank you.
So if the spotted owl specialist is with us, would he please join us and give his take on this? Troy, go ahead.
Hello, do you hear me?
Hi, yes, welcome.
Okay. I'd like to, first, the first thing I want to do is want to assure that everybody who's weighing in on spotted owl issues have read my report. And I can understand that that was hard to understand by some people, and I'm not surprised because it takes a long time to learn about spotted owls. Now, I've worked with spotted owls for 32 years, and most of that time has been through California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, and with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And so, dealing with angry neighbors trying to use spotted owl issues to stop timber harvesting or underland uses, that's nothing new to me. And that's why I write my reports the way I do. The next thing I want to tell you is that, under the Forest Practice Rules, they specify that you need to have five years of spotted owl survey experience and working with SEQA and the Forest Practice Rules to call yourself a spotted owl expert. And that really means that unless you have that experience, you're not qualified to make any determination about spotted owls at all. And my problem has been, in dealing with the Humboldt County spotted owl regulations, as I've done quite a bit of research into this, that the people who promulgated this particular policy had no spotted owl experience whatsoever. That's why they have misinterpreted the logging, the protocol for surveys. And so I'll sum this up. When we're talking, first of all, there has never been a concern for northern spotted owls and agricultural issues. It was never brought up in the...
We lost, we just lost you, sir.
Any of the variants that were developed in Northern California? I'm aware Humboldt County is the only county who has adopted these particular rules about spotted owls. And so when I do an analysis on spotted owls, I use the protocol that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service developed for disturbance of logging. And I was filing trees, operating equipment, and that assessment area is a quarter of a mile around the disturbance. And now I wanted to correct something that has been said, if you're still with me. I'm not saying that it's not spotted owl habitat, I'm saying that it's unlikely for spotted owls to nest within a quarter mile of where these greenhouses are developed, because there's never any records of spotted owls ever nesting that close, and the areas are fairly regularly surveyed, so we pretty much know where owls are. And so I would have to sum this up to say that I've actually, I'm already on my way to approach the Office of Administrative Law on this, because I've worked for two years, and what I think is happening is we're dealing with a procedural trap, which is a SEQA term. And I really lament that so much effort is putting into spotted owl issues when there are other issues that are much more concerning. And so my report stands on itself. I've written dozens of these reports, and this is really a lead agency decision. And I encourage you to, you know, I have previously suggested a biologist with Fish and Wildlife, whose name is Rich Klug. um, whose name is Rich Klug. There is a California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection biologist, and her name is Stacy Stanish, and they're experts in spotted owl biology. These are people that you need to seek a second opinion from, not people who used to work for Epic and whose only interest is to use the spotted owl as some kind of weapon to curtail cannabis, just like they had in logging. Now, thank you so much, I'm...
Thank you. All right, so now I will come back and let Kent finish his, uh, presentation, or not presentation, but his comments, excuse me. Sorry about that, Kent. If you're there, go ahead, Kent.
Yes, I am, Alan. Thank you for, uh, the indulgence of letting me speak afterwards. I, I, I back whatever Bonnie said there, she's always sharp about these things. That was a very interesting, I'm not aware of Epic ever going after a cannabis site in my life, but maybe they have, um, no, no, no is not there, okay. Anyway, um, the testimony that we were just given is contradicting itself, appears to be agendized for something other than what we're dealing with, and you had other experts that were said needed to be contacted, and possibly those are the experts you need to have. Uh, CDFW had their comments, and I thought that would be coming from a field of experts. I, I would be very reluctant to move forward with this until you have some further studies based upon the testimony you just received. Um, what, I don't know, this will be up to you folks, but I, that's, that's my feeling on that. Uh, and this project, if the inconsistencies are there that was mentioned by Bonnie, this is some pretty sloppy work, um, on the part of, uh, this being brought forward at this time. They are there, and I continually seem to see these in recent reports. I highly recommend that you go ahead and, and continue this to another meeting and tell us some further review for the spotted owl issue can be done, or else make a decision at this time to, to deny this extension. Thank you, my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. Uh, Director would like to s...
I would recommend you go to the, uh, other caller, and, and then we would like to respond to what we've heard.
Vanessa, is that, okay, so, the next caller was Vanessa Valari.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, my name's Vanessa, and I'm the consultant on this project. Um, I just wanted to clear up a few things, I tried to make some notes and keep up with it. Um, first, just since we're on the spotted owls, I'll start there. This project was put up, was going before, um, the zoning administrator last year, and was actually pulled over the CDFW comment, and that was when we hired Troy Leopardo. We had already had one biological assessment done that said that we wouldn't be impacting the spotted owl, and then because of the CDFW, um, response, we did have the additional spotted owl survey completed that was just about the spotted owls and the marble murelets instead of all the biologicals. And, um, that was the second report that also said that we would not have an impact on any spotted owls in the area. Um, then to move on to some of the other things that were brought up, um, the secondary pond on the map, that was meant to be removed. I was pretty sure that our firm had turned in a new map since then, it didn't have the pond on it, but apparently not, but we have no intention of putting another pond in. Um, this, to clear up the pre-existing thing, um, originally I applied for what I believed was twenty-six thousand square feet of pre-existing, but after a lot of back and forth with the county on what they determined was the pre-existing, they had knocked us all the way down to the seventeen, and then I realized it could apply for more growth, so we applied for more grow. In the back and forth of those conversations, we did land on thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty square feet. I'm not sure why the description and the supplementals are different, but it just could be because we worked really hard on this between my firm and the county to make this all work out over time with, within all the regulations. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up was the energy, this is a hundred percent solar, the generator is there simply as an emergency backup. As we've seen, it's not only the inclement weather of rain that can cause our solar to go down, but the fires also make it where the solar panels don't work at all, and we do need to have a backup in these rural areas when that happens. This generator is fully contained in a shed, and it is just a Honda generator. It's only sixty-three decibels if you're standing right next to it in its full containment. So, beyond it, in this completely contained shed that it's in, I, I don't perceive it having any type of noise impact on the cultivation area. Um, I think that is all of the, oh, and then the noise assessment, I just wanted to touch on the noise assessment real quick and how those are done. So they are done at, at any time of the year, but they are done over a twenty-four hour period, and they are set up on all of the parcel lines. So you have multiple noise readers that are set up for twenty-four hours, and they take an average reading of the twenty-four hour time period. So, you know, I don't think it's necessarily seasonally dependent, it's a lot of like daytime, nighttime dependent, are the birds chirping, and then we also have to put a description in of what's happening in the environment at that time, so we actually have to say if it's raining, or if it's windy, or what the weather was that day. So these noise assessments do have quite a bit of information in them that help the planning department make a determination later about the three decibels, whether or not our operation has raised it three decibels within the report we originally turned in. I hope that helps. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, is there any other public that wishes to speak on this item? Any other public that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody in our audience that wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. Would you like to go, oh, Director, yes?
Thank you, Chair. I would, uh, just like to give a little bit of background and then, um, make a recommendation for the commission's consideration. So the EIR four two point O identifies that anything that's within one point three miles of, um, identified spotted owl is presumed to be a nuisance and harassment and is a significant impact. What I heard tonight was that it's unlikely nesting habitat, but that doesn't preclude the presence of spotted owl. So what we're really looking for here, unfortunately to comply with the mitigation measure, is thumbs up or thumbs down whether or not spotted owl have been identified within one point three miles of this particular site. Commissioner Mulder is exactly right on that. Based upon what I'm hearing and having read, um, there is not that evidence on the record to confirm that. And I will also say that many of the foresters that have talked to me about that mitigation measure strongly disagree with it. They think it's complete and total overkill, but it is what has been adopted as part of the EIR at this point, and so that is what we have to comply with. Based upon that, I would recommend that you continue this item with the direction to have hooting done to determine whether or not there are spotted owl within one point three miles of this site.
Thank you, Director. Well, that kind of changes things up. Um, I see Thomas has his hand up, so I'll let him speak. Go ahead, Thomas.
I had my hand up, uh, because the presentation earlier was talking about potential habitat, and then it reminded me from my class about the core area and that quarter mile that's really the protected zone from the forestry practices class I went to, but then the Director just shot down that idea because one point three miles, I guess I missed that part, because everything I've been taught is within a quarter mile is that protected zone, so I have nothing. I'm confused, honestly. I just, I mean, within a, outside of a quarter mile, you can run chainsaws, but if you're within one point three miles, I'm gonna, it's gonna be quiet.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any thoughts or concerns?
Do we need to make a motion to, um, make the recommendation that John presented?
Yeah, I would recommend you continue to a date uncertain.
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, go ahead, Peggy.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, continue it to a date uncertain.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Mike, you have a...
And we're directing the staff to, um, look towards hooting, is that what you mentioned, Director?
We need to fulfill the mitigation measure, and there is, based upon the testimony and what was written, there is conflicting information, and we need to get it clarified.
So I'd like to...
Is that part of the motion, John?
Yes.
All right. Uh, with that, Trip, would you, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Alan Bondeo?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Thank you, Trip. Uh, motion carries unanimous, this will be coming back to us, uh, date uncertain. All right, thank you. All right, so with that, that brings us on to item number six, which is Hatchery Road Solar CUP Extension in the Blue Lake area. Uh, I'm not sure who, it was, if it was Kent, I'll have him just ask, but I didn't write down who polled it, so, um, we'll take a staff report on it. Yeah, Mike, I don't know if...
This, this is Kent, I've been unmuted, I believe, is that true?
Yes, are you the one that polled this?
Yeah, uh, yes, I am, I, I, unless somebody else pulled it also.
No, it's just...
Um, I, very, very quickly here, this project should have never happened, this is beautiful habitat down the fish hatchery, and all I'm asking is that, uh, basically some head hunters came in here and they were able to get some this, that, and the other and push this through. But I'm just asking that we go ahead and if they, if this is extension, that they be notified this will be the final extension, if you're gonna give them any at all, uh, uh, and then maybe the, the people in this area can, can have their beautiful habitat without looking at these butt ugly solar panels in a total wrong place, down by our fish hatchery, where a lot of people recreate. So that, that's all I would be asking you, to put a condition on here that this is the last extension, and if they can't, uh, make it feasible to get it done, just don't keep this one hanging overhead. Fortunately, nothing's happened so far. You ever get a chance to go down the fish hatchery, you look at this property, and you'll totally understand, there was an awful lot of pushback from the people in the area and the people who recreate down there, and yet the planning commission seemed to not hear us at that time. So that's my input on this, and that's my request. Thank you, my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. Since it's opened up, is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none?
There's one.
Wait, there is one, it just popped up, so... Uh, Stephanie, I'm gonna say...
Lucas.
Lucas or Locus?
Lucas.
What's everybody looking at?
Um, a little technical...
Okay. There's a few things going on, sorry about that. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you, I'm the project developer and wanted to thank the committee for their time this evening, and offer to request if you have any questions for me as to why we're extending, et cetera. I'm available for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant from anybody on the commission? Doesn't appear to be, all right. I will, with that, seeing no more public hands up, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment, period, and bring it back to the commission, so, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I, I'm in agreement with Kent, I was one of those that did not agree with this project when it was brought forward to us. Solar is good, um, but this particular place and where it was happening, I didn't agree with, so, um, I would like to, if, um, nobody else is looking to do anything or want to discuss anything, I would move to do this, but with the condition that this be the only extension.
Okay, so is that a motion?
That is.
Motion. Is there a second to go with that motion? I got a hand up, but I gotta switch over to panelists. Go ahead, Thomas.
Only way I could second that is if, uh, we no longer required everyone else to have green power, because I'm confused, you know, with this project, and then there was another project that was green energy, and it's been kind of pushed back from the community, but then we tell people to go on green energy, so, just as, I'm confused, that's about it, so I can't second the motion as it sits.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Is there anybody else that would second that motion? Brian, go ahead.
Mister Chairman, I would, uh, offer an alternative motion.
Okay.
And that would be to move to give the extension as staff recommends.
Okay. So, we have a motion already on the table, and we didn't get a second for it, but he's making an alternative, or would you go along with that? Would you amend your motion?
Somebody else would need to second his.
That's what I'm saying, I was...
If I could, Chair...
Go ahead.
Um, the mo, the first motion didn't get a second.
Right.
So it died.
It died.
So now, Commissioner Mitchell made a motion, you're looking for a second on that.
Okay, so do we have a second on Commissioner Mitchell's? No? Thomas?
I'll send a move.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion about that? So, I would ask Trip for a roll call vote, please.
And this motion is, um, this is to, uh, approve as recommended by staff, right?
Correct.
Neato. Sorry, I was dealing with some technical issues. Uh, it won't let me record Brian as the, uh, first, uh, person, so I have to press the none, just one sec, dealing with, uh, the software, all righty.
Alan Bondeo?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
No, not because it's solar, but because of the project in general.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Trip. Motion carries three to two to, uh, give the extension. It's a seven ten, and we usually take a break about this time, so before we get into the next item, I think we'll take a, a quick break, and then we'll come back and continue, so we'll see you back in five minutes or so. Thank you. So during the break, the Director spoke with me, and we're gonna do a little, a few changes on the agenda, uh, because we have the Nordic Fish Farms Project and have, uh, multiple people from out of town, out of country, I guess, that are here, um, and we have a lot on our agenda tonight, we're gonna move that up and start it, and we are going to let that presentation go till eight forty-five, and then stop it, and then we will continue with our regular agenda, so hopefully we can get the majority of it covered, and it will come back to us, but, um, we decided to, to make that move to accommodate some people. Um, anyway, with that, I will take a staff report on the Nordic Fish Farms then. Aqua Farms, excuse me, Aqua Farms, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just kinda changing it up here and on the, on the fly.
Thank you. My name is Kate Hager, I am the design planner for the county Humboldt, this is my associate, Byron Turner, senior...
Is your mic off? Is your... Your mic off?
Thank you. Uh, today we'll be presenting an informational workshop on Nordic Aqua Farms, land-based aquaculture project. I'll start over. My name is Kate McNamara. I'm the assigned planner with the County of Humboldt. This is my associate Byron Turner, senior planner of Lakeone Associates. We're accompanied today by Nordic Aqua Farms California, the project applicant, GHD, the project agent, and the Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation and Conservation District, the EIR co-applicant. The project is located on a former pulp mill site that historically supported the industrial timber and pulp mill operations since the 1960s, and is known as the Redwood Marine Terminal Two. The parcel is an active brownfield site that has received grant funding from the United States Environmental Protective Agency for cleanup and assessment activities, though extensive remediation and site cleanup is still needed. Oops. The site is characterized by remnant pulp mill infrastructure and concrete foundations. The majority of these structures will be demolished prior to Phase One of the project, which will be Phase Zero. Existing infrastructure that would be utilized includes ocean outfall for discharge of treated effluent, piping and intake structures for the intake of saltwater, and an electrical switchyard. Additionally, an existing domestic leach field is intended for use during Phase One and will be decommissioned for Phase Two of the project. Site remediation will includes, will include hazardous material abatement, demolition, and soil remediation. The project is a land-based, recirculating aquaculture system facility. The facility, the facility will include five buildings with a combined footprint of 766,530 square feet at full buildout, which will include a 690-square-foot roof-mounted solar array. The project will be conducted in two phases with a preliminary site preparation, Phase Zero, which will include site cleanup and demolition activities. Phase One will include intake and outfall connections, as well as ground densification to prepare for the construction of Building One, Central Utility Plant, Building Three, Fish Processing Plant and Administrative, Building Four, Waste Water Treatment and Backup Power, Building Five, and Oxygen Generation Storage Stormwater Systems. Phase Two would include additional ground densification and the grow-out of the modular system. This fade, this would also include additional soil remediation, expansion of utilities, and the existing leach field decommission. The project is expected to have 150 employees anticipated at full buildout, and the applicant is proposing to raise Atlantic salmon, subject to approval from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The, the project would require water from two sources, saltwater from the Humboldt Bay and, and freshwater, both domestic and untreated industrial water from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. The district has provided a will-serv letter for the project citing that the district has the capacity to serve the needs of the project consistently. The existing water intakes are owned and operated by the Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation and Conservation District. In order to provide the saltwater to the site, the Humboldt, the Harbor District is proposing to upgrade the existing water intake features at Redwood Marine Terminal Two and Red Tank Dock. The two water intakes, also referred to as sea chests, are located at the Samoa, are located within the Samoa Channel of the Humboldt Bay. They are approximately a half-mile apart and are shown in pink on the map. The proposed upgrades include baywater withdrawal and pumping to specific upland points that will be connected to Nordic Aqua Farms site and future users on the peninsula. And the proposed upgrades include modifying the existing systems and replacing existing intake screens with modernized intake screens designed to induce entrapment and impingement of aquatic species. The fire suppression water would be sourced from industrial water provided by the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Here you'll see the intakes. Depicted above are the red tank existing sea chest and sea chest screen. And the two photos below show Redwood Marine Terminal Two water intake pumps and screens. Screen size for the intake will be modified to one millimeter to prevent the entrainment and entrapment of larval and marine organisms. This is smaller than the standard of 1.75 millimeters, which is outlined in the ocean plan. The applicant is proposing to discharge treated effluent via an existent, existing ocean outfall pipe. The outfall pipe is approximately one and a half miles long, 48 inches in diameter, with 144 diffuser ports that discharge into the Pacific Ocean. There are currently two permitted users of this infrastructure, DG Fairhaven and the Samoa Waste Water Treatment Plant. The outfall has a capacity to discharge 40 million gallons daily, of which the applicant is proposing to discharge 12 and, 12 and a half million gallons daily. And then here is an overview for context. Byron?
Thank you, Kate. So the role of the county, there are multiple agencies involved in this project. The role of the county is the lead agency under SEQA, responsible for the environmental analysis of the entire project. The county is also the permitting agency for the terrestrial development, which is the land-based portion of the, of the project. The county does not permit the outfall, or the intake, or the species. So who is responsible for those other items? So the, like I said, the county is the aquaculture facility, but the sea chest upgrades are permits from the coastal development, Coastal Commission. The water intake is governed by the Regional Water Controll Board, the National Marine Fisheries, and the Army Corps, as well as the Harbor District. Waste water discharge via the outfall are permits through the Coastal Commission and the Regional Quality, Water Quality Control Board. And fish species, that permit is issued by Department of Fish and Wildlife. As far as the SEQA process goes with this project, initial study to mitigate negative declaration was originally created and circulated for this project. It was a collaborative decision to pivot to a full EIR in order to get the full benefits of the SEQA process, which is a higher level of public discourse. So the notice of preparation was created and circulated in June and July of 2021. The draft EIR was completed after that time period. The, it was circulated from December 20th to February 18th of this year. The final EIR is still in progress. We received 243 individual comments on the final EIR, and as I mentioned, part of the reason why the EIR process is the appropriate is the county will be responding to each of those comments, and that will be presented as part of the final EIR in a upcoming hearing. With regard to the policy framework, which is something else that the county looks at, the staff analysis is determined, has determined the project is consistent with the local coastal plan, the Humboldt Bay, which is the Humboldt Bay Area Plan, and the zoning district. In order to approve the project, the planning commission needs to make the findings that the project is consistent with the policies of the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. These policies include the policy that coastal development shall have priority over other developments on or near the shoreline, the policy that fish processing and aquaculture are one of the uses listed in designated, that's designated in coastal development industrial, the policy that new industrial development shall be located within or close to existing developed industrial uses, and that a project does not have an adverse impact on coastal resources. This will all be further elaborated on in a future meeting with the findings. Kate, you want to talk about the zoning ordinance?
Yes. The lands west of Vance Avenue are zoned industrial general. However, the aquaculture facility will be constructed on MC portion of the parcel, which is coastal-dependent industrial. Coastal-dependent industrial uses include, but are not limited to, fish processing for human consumption, ocean intake, outfall, and discharge pipelines, and aquaculture and aquaculture support facilities, all of which are proposed by Nordic Aqua Farms California. A cultural resource study was prepared for the project and established a formal discovery protocol, and additional recommendations have been required in the form of mitigation measures in the draft environmental impact report and the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. The project is consistent with the requirements of the A combining zone. The proposed use of aquaculture is principally permitted in this zone. Principally permitted uses are explicitly allowed within a given zoning district.
Additional findings will also be provided regarding health, safety, and welfare. These additional findings will be regarding the adaptive reuse of the property, the site remediation, again, the priority for coastal development, coastal-dependent industrial, and the economic and educational benefits of this project. The, there are some biological considerations we wanted to point out. This slide shows how the project avoids ESHA, which is the environmentally sensitive habitat. This site, and that, that ESHA exists primarily in the south. The shaded yellow areas are the, the, the areas in question. The site was actually redesigned in order to avoid the ESHA. Setbacks were also established to ensure that the project was at least 100 feet away from any wetland. There is also dark-eyed ghillie on the site. This is a special set of species, but it is not a state or federally listed, and this will be mitigated for as well. With regard to traffic and transportation considerations, as stated before, about approximately 90 to 150 employees in two shifts will be accessing the site daily. Regular shipments of both fish and feed and other co-products will happen approximately 90, 90 trips a week, which is, results in 15 trips a day, which is on a road system designed for truck traffic and industrial uses.
Of which roughly 240 trips are recorded daily. In terms of public interest, we're gonna discuss some project benefits. The environmental benefits are that the proposed project plans to remediate a registered brownfield site, which may pose health risks to the surrounding community and environment. Remediation would include soils remediation and the removal of hazardous materials on site. Mitigation measures also include the removal of creoset pilings from the Kramer Dock, of which four are required, and 984 are voluntary from Nordic Aqua Farms California. The removal of Kramer Dock pilings can restore natural channels within Humboldt Bay and restore marine habitat benefiting a number of species. Oops. In terms of economic benefit, the impacts can extend to numerous areas of our economy, including a significant local employment gains in the immediate term for demolition, remediation, and construction activities, and approximately 150 local permanent jobs that range from blue collar to technical work. And then the Pacific Northwest will also benefit from this with a direct source of farmed, farmed salmon, a majority of which is currently sourced from Europe and the East Coast, which will decrease product cost. And last but not least, educationally. Nordic Aqua Farms California has stated that they are committed to working with our local higher education, which includes the aquaculture facilities at College of the Redwoods and with individuals at Cal Poly Humboldt. This could also provide a local pipeline for a range of jobs suitable for recent college graduates. Now the Harbor District will present.
Hi, good evening. I can either present through this, through Zoom, or you've got the flash drive there? My name's Rob Holman. I'm the Development Director of the Humboldt Bay Harbor District, and I think you'll see me twice tonight, so I'm gonna start with the presentation about the history of the site. And we just heard about traffic, so one of the images that I'm gonna be sharing with you is the site and what it looked like in 1965 when it was active. And you'll see a, a large parking lot, um, full of cars. All right, so let's just go straight into it. So this is a historic photo here. You can see from the, from the smoke there that, you know, this is an era in which the pulp mill was actively working, and that is the site that we're looking at. I'm hoping this is my button here. Great. So, the site is a, a former pulp mill, a very active industrial site with a lot of infrastructure there. And this is the image I was telling you about, 1965. And if we zoom in on that parking lot there in the middle, you can see there's an awful lot of vehicles there, a lot of employees, a lot of truck traffic coming and going from the site. So it's got a history of use. And you can see here from the smokestack that it was an active industrial site with a lot of activity, greenhouse gas emissions. Moving forward into time, so, you know, the most recent aerial of the site, 2019, you can see what it looks like now. But if we flip back to some historic aerials, go back to 1990s, the oldest aerial we can find that's of a resolution where you can see anything, you can see that the site's very active in 1990, so that's 20-some years ago. And we're gonna be talking about this dock later today, but you can see that it pretty much is the same as it was in 1990. Then jumping forward to the year 2003, the site's still very active. You can still see smoke coming out of the stacks. The parking lot's full of employees. Same in 2005. But things changed in 2010, and so the site stopped operating in 2010, but a lot of toxic materials were left behind. So it was a big, it was a big deal for the community at that time. A lot of lost jobs, and the fact that, you know, the site was not cleaned up when it was shut down. So in 2014, the Harbor District acquired the site and began a robust process of re-envisioning the property and cleaning it up simultaneously. So the EPA assisted the district and expended $15 million in environmental cleanup. The Harbor District expended $8 million of its own resources and removed 4 million gallons of highly corrosive pulping liquor, 10,000 gallons of hydrochloric acid, and tens of thousands of gallons of terpenes and other highly toxic materials. At the same time, during that whole cleanup process, the district and a number of stakeholders envisioned what the property could become and really identified as the, the goal, a national marine research and innovation park. And so honoring the legacy of the site and Humboldt County's economy, a portion of the site was envisioned to be public cargo dock and, you know, continue on with the timber industry. A big portion of the site was envisioned to be aquaculture, and so now here we are, 10 years later, nearly 10 years later, and Nordic Aqua Farms perfectly fits with the vision that was established at the time. So it was a lot of, you know, intricate detail in what was envisioned, and Nordic really fits the bill. There was also envisioned a marine research center, including, you know, education and classrooms about marine research and, and aquaculture. And Nordic is actively working with College of the Redwoods to, and the district is as well, to help make this component of the project a, a reality. So, in conclusion, just for this history of the site, we are really realizing the vision. The site's well on the way to being cleaned up, but needs private investment to complete the job. There's still a lot left to do, even though we've made great progress. Nordic Aqua Farms fits the vision established by, established by the district and stakeholders. And then the baywater intake systems are critical to Nordic and other aquaculture businesses, and I'll be covering that in a presentation in a moment. Correct? Yep, all right.
Now we will hear from the project agent, GHD.
Hi, I'm Andrea Hilton. I work for GHD. I'm a planner. We are the consultant for the applicant. There's slides, I wonder? I'm going to just briefly go over some of the most fundamental of those studies. All of the studies are appended to the EIR. Appendix A includes visual simulations of the proposed project from a number of vantage points around the bay. Appendix C is the terrestrial biological resources report, which addresses biological resources specific to the terrestrial aquaculture development. And Appendix D is the marine resources biological report, which specifically addresses marine resources involved with the project, specific to the treated effluent discharge through the existing ocean outfall. Appendix E is the numeric modeling report, often called the dilution study, which addresses water quality specific to the treated effluent discharge through the existing ocean outfall. Additionally, Appendix F is a technical memorandum summarizing the special status plant surveys, vegetation community mapping, and ESHA, the environmentally sensitive habitat area. Appendix H of interest is the preliminary hydrologic stormwater analysis for the terrestrial development. Appendix I is the tsunami hazard analysis or evaluation. And Appendix J is the construction noise, vibration, and hydroacoustic assessment. Lastly, appendices N, P, and Q, prepared by Tenera Environmental, support the Humboldt Bay water intakes and related off-site compensatory restoration related to biological productivity and entrament, or potential entrament, of specific species of interest. Additionally, I'd note that a cultural resources report was prepared for the project by consultant and expert Jamie Roscoe. This report was shared with and commented on by the local tribes, but not appended to the EIR because of its confidential information within. SEQA requires environmental analysis for 20 specific resource categories. Each of these 20 resource categories were evaluated for the four primary project components, being the terrestrial development, the marine outfall, the harbor district's water intake upgrades, and the off-site compensatory restoration. Each of these four components were evaluated for all 20 resource categories, and a level of significance was determined. Under SEQA, there are four options for a level of significance determinations: no impact, less than significant impact, a less than significant impact with the incorporation and mitigation, or potential significant impacts even after mitigation has been incorporated. Of the 20 resource categories, those with no impacts are discussed in Chapter 5 of the EIR, and these are agriculture and forestry resources, land use and minerals, public services, recreation, and tribal cultural resources. Resource categories with less than significant impact determinations are in Chapter 3 of the EIR and include aesthetics, energy, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, population and housing, transportation, utilities, and wildfire. Of the 20 resource categories, six required mitigation. The six resource categories with less than significant impacts after mitigation include air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and hazards, hazards and hazardous materials, and hydrology and water quality. I would note that the mitigation for hydrology and water quality is specific to the terrestrial development only, related to the standard requirements for a stormwater pollution prevention program and other basic construction protections for water quality during construction of the facility and are not related to the ocean discharge whatsoever. There were no resource categories that resulted in a determination of potential significant impacts even after mitigation.
And now we will hear from the Nordic Aqua Farms, California team.
Thank you. And I'm Mary Aness. I'm head of the California Project for Nordic Aqua Farms. And I do have a presentation somewhere. It's coming up. Yes. This is a rendering of the proposed facility. Let's see. I think before we start, I need to, I'd like to acknowledge that we are on tribal historic land, and we appreciate the opportunity to give, propose this facility, and hopefully also construct it in the future. I'm here with a team that we brought in from the East Coast. It's myself, and we have Scott Thompson. He's our local project manager. We have Kahal Dunin. He's our head of production. He is one of the most experienced grass farmers in the world. He's done this for several decades. We have Nick King. He's our operational quality control manager, the expert in biosecurity, fish health, welfare, and field. And then we have online David Neuss, our senior vice president of technology. And then we have Lynette and Stacy, who are our local community liaisons. And then, of course, we have GHD with us as well. So we have a team that can answer most of the questions that you might have, and particular questions regarding fish escape, fish health, fish, you know, aquaculture production and technology. So this is a overview of the site itself. It has been shown previously by Kate and Byron. But if you look at this facility, the number, the one, building labeled number one is the hatchery and the smolt facility. That's where the eggs come in, and you hatch the egg, and they grow to a certain size. Before, they're transferred, or they swim, actually, what we call swim pipes, to facility labeled, labeled to. And they grow, and they get graded, and split in smaller, in tanks again, until final harvest size. Then they swim in pipes into the building labeled number three, which is the perch and processing facility. So the fish are never outside. They're fully contained in this facility. After harvesting, they're shipped out from facility number three, or from building number three. Building number four is a wastewater treatment facility. Everything is treated, all the water is treated before it's discharged into the ocean. Number five is the intake, water intake treatment facility. And Kahal and Nick will come back more to details around that. And then we have the intakes that Rob will speak to. Number seven is the discharge pipe. And then we have a oxygen generation facility, too. It's actually not a building. It's a platform with oxygen generation on. So this is a brief overview of the site itself. We came here three years ago, and we have spent quite some time in the community. Actually, we counted, and we've had more than 750 meetings and events in the community, and I have personally participated in probably more than 500 of them. So it took some time, and we think it's, you know, important to be part of a community. Important to listen and to learn and to understand what is important to the community. And that's why also we are addressing some of these issues tonight. So it's, it takes a lot of work, but it's been, it's been good. It's a great community, and that's one of the reasons why we chose this community, too, is that it's a great place for people to live. We are looking at hiring a pretty competent, you know, workforce. I think a lot of them are actually here in the community already, but we also want to retain them. We want to make sure that we have a stable workforce and a place where you can live and raise your family and be happy. So this community was chosen, in addition to the infrastructure that it has, also because it is a nice, lovable community. But we need to understand it. That's why I spent three years until we're here today. So it's been a lot of work, but it's been very useful, and I would say I enjoyed it too, quite a lot. So it's a great place. We have, in addition to using our own technical team, we have used some of the foremost experts that we found in Humboldt and Northern California, and in some instances also in the world. For example, for our tsunami assessments, that Scott will go through later in this And as Byron said, we, after input from the Coastal Commission, we redesigned the facility. Originally, it was placed further to the south. We were able to do some technical reconfiguration of the facility and compress it a little bit so we can avoid the impact on the ESHA, and also reduce the impact on the ghillie, which will be mitigated for three to one offsite. In addition to that, we spent quite some time in dialogue with local stakeholder groups, which have, has resulted in some significant improvements of the project. As Byron mentioned, it was a collaborative decision after feedback from the community that it was wise to go to an EIR to assess it. We want to be part of this community for, you know, a long time into the future, and we want to make sure that the public is comfortable with the project. So it was moved from the ISNMD to the EIR. After expressed concerns regarding the discharge into the ocean, we have added some more voluntary monitoring of background data and also of the discharge itself, and also independent monitoring. So we will work with environmental groups and other stakeholders to ensure that, you know, it's third-party verified. We have also made a commitment to purchase 100% renewable and/or non-carbon power. And the reason why I say renewable and non-carbon, it's classifications change. Carbon is the most important thing here, but classifications change, and we need to buy what's available locally and in California. But, you know, it's supposed to be, or will be, carbon-free. In dialogue with the environmental groups, we've also agreed to have a introduce and committed to, and it will be a condition, it will be described in the project description. It will also be a condition in the permit, a comprehensive transportation management plan, to ensure that people, to reduce the impact from commuting. In addition to that, in workforce development, we have decided and committed to use a combination of union and non-union work, and that's important. There are certain building traits that are not unionized here in Humboldt, and we want to make sure that we give the opportunity to as much local labor as possible. We're not giving away work, but they have the fair chance to compete, to pre-qualify and compete. And there will be work packages that are tailored to local contractors, you know, capabilities here as well. So either as a subcontractor or as a contractor, but it's important for us. We want to make sure that we're not importing labor when we can find them locally. And in addition to that, we have worked with College of the Redwoods to redevelop their aquaculture program. They will introduce a one-year certificate program and an associate degree, and also the possibility to transfer to Cal Poly. And we will introduce a scholarship program, too, to ensure that we have a good pipeline of qualified candidates. So working with the community actually will improve and has improved the project, which we think is important. I am not going to discount any concerns, but I think, you know, it's important to put things in perspective. We have a highly treated discharge. We take up 99% of all the nutrients and more than 90% of the nitrogen. If you put it in the context or in the perspective of what's being, what's the outflow from Mad River, you see, these are the numbers over the last, you know, 50 years. The driest year was 89 million gallons a day, and the maximum was 1,600 million gallons a day. And then the light blue bar is the normal range, and the average has been 714, or the mean. We are discharging 12.5 million gallons a day. Eel River has about the same outflow. That water is fresh. Partial of the year is warmer, and it has more nutrients. And the ocean can still absorb it. I'm not discounting, because one of the reasons why we took fish farming out of the ocean was to abate for some of the biological, environmental, you know, issues we saw in the ocean. But still, if you look at the context of discharge, yes, it is a big facility, but it's not as, if you look at what's naturally flowing into the ocean and what the ocean can absorb and can, it's still a fairly small number compared to what's a natural phenomenon here. When it comes to the water intake, all those little droplets represent high tide in Humboldt Bay. And that line is, below the line is the low tide, and above the line is the tidal prism. That's the water exchanged two times a day. And if you compare that to what we take out, we take out the equivalent of that little red circle. So we're not discounting that it's important and that, you know, we need to mitigate it for it, but if you put it in context, it's not that big. We're not draining the bay. And then there has been a lot of concerns regarding the discharge, you know, what it is and how it's modeled, and water samplings and baselines. I'll try to present this. It's a very complicated model. I'll try to present it in a way that is understandable for most of us and just kind of walk you through what we have done. First of all, we use the Danish Hydraulic Institute's MIKE 3 model, which is one of the top two models used in the world. And when you start using it, you need to calibrate it. I mean, it can be used anywhere, but it needs to be calibrated with local data. So you put the boundaries around it. And in this particular incidence, it was Mad River to the north, Pacific Ocean, deep water to the west, Humboldt Bay to the east, and Eel River to the south. And then we use the bathymetry of the seabed and Humboldt Bay to get the right perspectives. And these models, just like GIS, for example, is populated with a lot of data. So you populate it with the temperatures, salinity, currents, and water, and everything that you have. It has been modeled throughout the globe and also for this area. And then you build in the outflow and the impacts from the rivers, so you can see how that, you know, the ocean reacts to that. And then to verify it, you need to have some local data. You need to have, and that's where, you know, there has been some questions. Why have you used, you know, the data from the mouth of the bay and not from the discharge point two miles to the north? You cannot go out and just sample data. You need to have a consistent set of data over time that shows various seasons, and then you look at it, you look at what's the mean, and how can you actually differentiate between it? And that's why we use the only existing data that is suitable here in Humboldt to use to verify the model. And then you kind of pull our discharge through the model and see how it reacts. And then you have thresholds in the ocean plan, and you see how fast it goes back to background level. And everything that is being discharged, and we have open 66 out of 144 ports, goes to background level within five feet. So and then you estimate, you know, the outflow, and you look at what's called the environmental stressors, and the toxicity of a discharge is the temperature, this is salinity, it's ammonia, and then you also look at nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus in particular. And then you do a sensitivity analysis. You have all the seasons, so you looked at the different temperatures, the different upwelling, the different nutrient levels, but you also do a sensitivity analysis to stretch the boundaries to see how, you know, the ocean will react to that. That will include all the variations, including the area, the whole model area, including where the outflow pipe is. In addition to that, we will collect baseline data after we hopefully receive our permits and before we start discharging. And if we see any kind of material differences and... the different nutrient levels, but you also do a sensitivity analysis to stretch the boundaries to see how the ocean will react to that. That will include all the variations, including the area, the whole model area, including where the outflow pipe is. In addition to that, we will collect baseline data after we hopefully receive our permits and before we start discharging. And if we see any kind of material differences and according to the discharge modeler that we have used, that hasn't happened. It doesn't happen very often and it has never happened to the ones he has done before. Then it can be updated. And you can also do implement measures to ensure that you will not damage these receiving waters. It's 144 ports, so you can open more of them, which means that you will dilute it faster if that was an issue. And also there are significant buffers in our nutrient numbers in our discharge. We are dealing with biological creatures, so we do need some buffers to ensure that we can continue operating in case something happens. So there are several measures you can do to ensure that you are within the conditions in the permit. And then, of course, that has to be renewed. And you have to be compliant for it to be renewed every five years too. So there are several safety valves in a discharge permit. And we are pretty confident that we have done a very thorough and good job to ensure that we are not impacting the ocean. But it has always been, it's always a controversial issue in permitting like this. So we think it's still important to address it. I don't know if I have David online, if he can call in and speak to this or if I should do it? Is he? He's here?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep. Not anymore.
I thank you. I had to rejoin as an analyst. So the project will be subject to regulations and programs within the California Significant New Alternatives Policy founded on SB 1013 and the California Air Resource Board Hydrofluorocarbon Regulations. Specifically, the chillers will be subject to CARBS PFCs and the refrigerants will be subject to CARBS Refrigerant Management Program. As of January 2022, Refrigerant Management Program requires facilities with refrigeration systems containing more than 50 pounds of high global warming potential refrigerants to conduct and report periodic leak inspections, promptly repair leaks and keep service workers on site. The project will be a new facility and will employ a full-time maintenance team. Innovative maintenance checks, services and inspections, both visual and electronic leak detectors will be used and our effective means of detecting leaks in these systems would be utilized as a component of the regulatory inspection program. Our chillers are an essential part of the project's daily operations. They will receive regular tension to ensure they are functioning optimally, to ensure that our fish thrive. Thank you.
And I think the last point that David made is important. We are dependent on these being fully operational all the time. We need to chill the water to keep the fish thriving and ultimately also alive. I'm going to leave the next one to Scott.
Thank you. I hope you're all aware that we have a tsunami risk here on the North Coast, including our site. That comes from the Cascadia Subduction Zone, starts off the coast here and goes up into British Columbia. So we had the pleasure of working with one of the world's foremost experts on this subject, Mr. Gary Chalk. He's currently the Chair of the American Society of Civil Engineers Seismic and Tsunami Subcommittee. So he writes the rules and guidance for every other engineer looking at this in the country. So it was a pleasure working with him and seeing what he produced. So you can see the Cascadia Subduction Zone in the purple on the figure on the left. And then on the right is a LiDAR scan of our site with our buildings superimposed onto it. A couple of features I'll point out is those piles you see to the west of our site are former ash landfills from when the pulp mill operated. And those do actually provide some protection to our site in the event of a tsunami. So along the Cascadia Subduction Zone, there's an average return period of 800 years. That's the most common event that we see along this area. That's what most people would look at. That's what we required to look at as far as tsunami analysis. We voluntarily decided to look at the 2,500-year event, which is a much larger event. And it's just, we wanted to understand and design around the extreme end of the risk profile and not the average end of the risk profile. So this is one of the outputs of the modeling that Mr. Chalk did for us. And what you're seeing in the colors there is the maximum depth of water throughout the entire event. So as the water comes in and goes back out, that's showing the maximum depth of the water. So those ash landfills, I pointed out, those are not overtopped in this seismic event, so it does provide a lot of protection to the interior of our site. And it's mainly that northern building that takes the brunt of the wave. So you may recall that building's full of tanks of water. So there's a lot of synergy there engineering-wise that you have giant building full of water resisting a wave full of water and it's about making those engineering connections to make sure that the forces can balance out and the water doesn't come through the building. So as the wave comes in, it comes from the north. Here on this end of the subduction zone, we have really common earthquakes regularly, so we don't have a lot of tension building up here to generate a large tsunami. But to the north, we do have that risk. So the 2,500-year event would come from the north and roll to the south and that's depicted by the diagonal arrow there. So as the wave comes in, it would encounter our northern building one and then it's diverted around. And as it has to move around the building, the water piles up. And the model's actually accurate enough and detailed enough to show that. And that's why you're seeing about the seven meters of water there along the north edge of that building as the water moves around. So that is lower than the height of our tanks and it would not come through the buildings. And then we only see about two meters of water in the interior of the campus, which is really easy to work around. So some of the changes to the design that we incorporated as a result of this analysis and based on Mr. Chalk's recommendations, you can see the western buildings, they have rounded edges or the western edges of the buildings are rounded. And that's to allow water to move around more easily in an event like this. We also have downturned shearkey walls, which are concrete walls that go into the ground. That stops any scouring of material from underneath our foundation in an event like this. You can see up to 12 feet of scours, what the model predicted. So if this worst-case scenario event happened, all the fish would still be in the tanks afterwards. Our employees would be safely on the roof in the tsunami vertical evacuation area, but the facility likely wouldn't be able to operate because all the other infrastructure, roads, power lines would not be functioning after an event like this.
Okay. What you're looking at here is a conventional fish farm. Pretty much all the farmed Atlantic salmon that you'll buy in the store today are produced in a conventional fish farm like this, which is essentially a net containing fish suspended in the ocean. We know from Norway, which is the largest salmon producer in the world, that up to 93% of all fish escapes are from net pen operations similar to this one. And it's perhaps not too surprising when you consider all of the different marine hazards that these facilities can be exposed to, whether it's storm damage or collision from other vessels or a propeller puts a hole in the net or a predator does or whatever other surprises nature control your way when you're exposed in the ocean like that. But the point I want to make here is we are not one of these kinds of fish farms. We do not grow our fish this way. We will never grow our fish this way. We're completely different. We grow our fish on land in tanks for the entire production cycle from egg to harvest. They never go out to sea. And what that means is the 93% of fish escapes that are attributed to these net pen operations, they simply don't apply to us because we are not a net pen operation. Of the remaining 7% that can be attributed to land-based facilities, and we're talking about 17 facilities here out of approximately 300, almost all of them involve structural defects or missing barriers for fish. And more often than not, these facilities are located directly adjacent to bodies of water. That makes it very easy for any absconding fish to actually make it out into the sea and get away. And that's not surprising that a lot of these facilities are located close to the water because in the case of virtually all of these 17 facilities, they're smolt operations, which means they grow fish to a certain size, about 100 grams. And then those fish get put onto a vessel similar to this one, get taken out to one of those net pens that I showed you a moment ago and get pumped out into the cage. And the point here is that these facilities, they're not land-based facilities designed to hold fish all the way to market size like we are. So again, this is not us. We do not operate like this. All of our fish are housed within secure, fully enclosed steel buildings, buildings that are located more than 300 feet away from the nearest body of water. And these fish, they're contained in steel-reinforced composite tanks engineered to withstand a major seismic event. And as Scott just mentioned, we have these elevated concrete foundation walls and ground densification that are engineered to withstand a major tsunami or potential land subsidence. In addition, we've incorporated numerous safeguards and numerous physical barriers that separate the fish in the tanks from the external environment. And what do I mean by that? Well, if you take an example of any one of our tanks, water comes up the standpipe here and it goes down these other two standpipes off to the water treatment system to be recycled. And at the top of that device, we have screens. So those act as your first barrier to prevent fish from getting out of the tanks. Then that water makes its way to a mechanical filter, which acts as your second barrier. Then it goes to a device that's called a biological filter. And in that device, there are hundreds of millions of pieces, small pieces of plastic media that provide a very large surface area for beneficial bacteria to grow on. And they need to be contained in that device, in that tank. So there's a screen at the inlet and there's another screen at the outlet. So those act as more barriers. That's not to say the fish, if they made it in there, would survive very long anyway. So the water then makes its way to a pump sump and in the pump sump, there's an overflow. And that overflow has a double membrane, which acts as another barrier. And then the water makes its way to a central well, which has yet another double membrane barrier. And we're not done there. The water then makes its way to the wastewater treatment plant where it encounters another biological filter and yet another two barriers. And then finally, at the end of the line, the water goes to a tank, which has a device called an ultrafiltration unit. And that's a device that operates via vacuum and it sucks out the water through very, very tiny pores, micro pores. And in doing so, it removes material down to 0.04 micron. So the upshot of all this is we've included redundancy and fail safes and safety margins with multiple barriers, which makes it about as close to impossible as you're going to get for fish to escape from this facility. And we've never had any fish escape from our existing facilities, which we have in operation today in Norway and in Denmark. And they include some of the largest land-based facilities in the world for growing Atlantic salmon to market size. This slide, there were some concerns raised about the technology we use, that the technology is new and it's experimental. But in actual fact, this technology's been around for a long time. And it originated from the municipal wastewater industry and they started using it to grow fish in these kinds of RAS systems, actually going back almost 50 years now. And as you can see from this slide, some of this equipment, like the mechanical filter I showed you a moment ago, that was invented 150 years ago. The newest piece of equipment here, the most recent, is still over 100 years old. So this technology is not new. These kind of RAS facilities are not new. They're actually tested and proven. And while the configuration and the scale of them can change, actually the principle of operation of these kinds of facilities is pretty much the same in all of them. And speaking of the scale, some other concerns were raised about how big this facility is. You know, is it going to be too big to manage? And those concerns are understandable. But the reality is if you look at this system here, which is very similar to what we would be proposing to build for one of our ongoing systems here in Humboldt. And it consists of 20... It has 26 tanks. But those 26 tanks are divided into 13 separate compartments. So it's a modular design. Each pair of tanks that you see there has its own independent separated treatment system. So it operates on its own. And that provides a lot of advantages. It reduces the learning curve drastically and the operational logistics. It also helps with ease of construction because if you've mastered building one, you've mastered the operations, you've optimized the operations of one, well, all the rest of them are the same. And in actual fact, one of those units there, one of those modular units is approximately around the same size as some of the facilities that we operate in Norway today to grow Atlantic salmon. So in reality, while there are more of these, it's actually quite similar to what we do today already. So I will leave it there.
Okay. Biosecurity is critically important to the operation, the successful operation of our facility. In fact, it's so important that it's a key component of the design in this facility. You've seen already some slides that Kahal presented about the fact that this is a land-based farm. It's in a building that is enclosed. We have compartmentalization, which allows us to have discrete biosecurity zones. And it's also modular, which means we can isolate modules if the need be. Together with our fish health partners that included aquatic veterinarians, fish pathologists and health diagnostics labs, we were able to identify the local pathogen threats that may be endemic within this area. But also we have a really strong understanding of the broader scope of pathogens that can affect salmonids, including Atlantic salmon. And so with that in mind, we could then apply that understanding to the level of water treatment that we needed to have to make sure we mitigate it for those risks. I should say in the first place that it's within our best interest that this farm is protected from pathogens coming in and pathogens amplifying within it to a potential where they could cause disease in the fish. That's an absolute certainty for us. And so with that in mind, this farm has been completely over-engineered with regard to disinfection. You see in the intake water, 0.22 microns, 20 nanometers, followed by ozone treatment, followed by a very high level of UV disinfection at 250 milligels per centimeter square. Together, that is sufficient to exclude and denature bacteria, parasites, fungus and viruses of concern that we may have, not only for ourselves, but within the state California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And the same level of filtration is applied to our discharge. So the water is the only thing coming into the farm. What's leaving the farm is that water discharge, some products from our processing that are FDA inspected and the solid waste offtake. The life cycle itself, or the farming cycle, I should say, starts with eggs. We do not add fish that are alive that have been exposed to any natural environment. It's eggs from an qualified source hatchery. What that means is the source hatchery that we take our eggs from has to have a known fish health history for the facility. According to California Fish and Wildlife, they need to have a two-year cycle, I'm sorry, two years of history that they have not had detections of pathogens of concern, again, from the list of the California Fish and Wildlife Pathogen Concern. So the facility must have a competent biosecurity. This is a risk assessment, obviously, done by ourself, but also through the Department of California Fish and Wildlife. They'll assess the biosecurity, the pathogen surveillance, the fish health history. They need to make sure that that history is robust enough. It's the result of thousands of samplings within the facility. And outside the facility level, when we have identified a cohort of eggs that are going to be sent to us, the brood stock that have contributed to those eggs also needs to be screened and healthed. also needs to be screened and health-certified to make sure that that was free of pathogens that we're concerned about. The eggs themselves get disinfected at a time what we call water hardening, and that's with iodine disinfection. And then prior to sending them to us, the eggs are disinfected again. They're shipped in secure boxes. These boxes are sealed, and water is completely disinfected, sterilized water. And those boxes come directly to us, to our receiving area, which is within a quarantine area of the facility. Our quarantine area consists of three biosecure distinct zones. That's the receiving area, the hatchery where we hatch the eggs, and the first fry feeding area, where the fry will establish feeding. It's about ninety days that they stay in this facility, in this part of the facility. And it's only until those fry develop to a large enough size that we now can take them, have the proper diagnostics done on them to certify those that they're free of diseases and those pathogens that we're concerned about. And this is a collaboration and guidance that comes from California Fish and Wildlife. It's only at the time that those are deemed free of those diseases that they can move into the farm, and they are released from quarantine. So upon releasing the quarantine, they now are into the farm cycle. They go through a par phase, sorry, they finish their fry phase, they go to a par phase, a smolt phase, and then on to the on-growing phase. As I mentioned before, the farm itself has a lot of compartmentalization. It has the modular aspect for enhanced biosecurity. The water itself on the farm is recirculated. You hear us speaking about recirculating aquaculture technology. What that means is the water on the farm is continuously filtered and disinfected. And what that does, that allows, that prevents bacteria or any other pathogens from growing or amplifying in the facility if they were to somehow to break through. And then finally, within the facility, the stock itself is carefully monitored, and we apply our farm health, our fish health, fish welfare, and farm biosecurity management plan. So I should say, every decision we make about the operation of our farm has fish welfare in mind. We know that if we take care of the needs of our fish nutritionally with proper water quality, and we give them the space to exhibit their natural social behaviors, that they will thrive. And they will thrive, and they will grow well. They will have a good performance for us. They will remain healthy. And more important, they will be a good product quality for us. In addition to nutrition, water quality, and the social behavior aspect, we need to take close care of our fish health and their fish health needs. This is not a simple thing. This is a very complex program. I've listed here, you see a list of what that entails. To start, we have to have a farm health management team. I'm more or less a coordinator. We have an aquatic veterinarian that will be on staff or will be an external aquatic veterinarian. That aquatic veterinarian is supported by aquatic pathologists. That aquatic veterinarian and our pathologists are supported by laboratory diagnostics that include things like bacteriology, molecular diagnostics, virology, and histopathology. What that means is, and how we utilize that, is that every day is a daily assessment of fish health around the farm. All of our staff go through personal training to be able to recognize when fish are behaving normally and when they may be behaving or appearing differently that would raise a concern to come to our management to say, we should investigate this further. And once that happens, we move into the investigative part of the fish health support. We have on-site a fish health laboratory that will allow us to take a closer look, do things like necropsies, microscopy, and bacteriology right on-site in coordination with our lab manager and our veterinarian consult. Vaccination is another tool for biosecurity. What that means is, I mentioned at the beginning, we understand the local, the endemic threats that may be here in the term of bacteria that could be opportunistic. So we need to protect our fish, again, just in case it happens. So we can vaccinate them. And what that does is, it prevents a pathogen from creating disease, from amplifying within the farm. So we use vaccination to protect for that. We've already spoke about the prevention of escapes. But what I want to close with is this, that farm biosecurity is not a simple thing. We can't just point to one part of our program that says our water filtration, while it will remove, like I said, those pathogens, it's not the one thing that makes this program complete. It's the totality of how we manage our stock, how we can early detect if problems occur, and we can take care of them and address them before they become significant. So with that, I think I need to return to you.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for listening to us and let us present in this workshop. And we're happy to take any questions from you or the public. And of course, we will be back for the formal public hearing as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kate, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, but before we open up for questions, I wanted to allow you all to, if you'd like additional information on the intake proponent of the project, the Harbor District does have additional slides that they're able to present. But that is dependent on time and whether or not you guys would like to hear the information.
Does anybody want to see that? I'm pretty comfortable with what we've seen so far, but...
I'm okay with what we've seen so far. I know that we'll see more on the intake here in another meeting. I'm certain of that. I just wanted to disclose that I've been to some of the meetings, went on the site tour, so ex parte. I've been on the site, took a tour, looked at the brownfield, looked at the facility as it is right now, and it really needs to be cleaned up. I've been at my Rotary Club, and it was presented there. And I've been online, listening and watching, and listening to comments from different folks around the community. More just, I was not commenting on anything. I was just listening to this as it was presented down the road. So that's my disclosure.
All right. Does any of the commission have questions for staff or for the applicants?
I just have a couple of questions. Why Atlantic salmon?
You got my question.
When we're Pacific coast. Now, why would we want to bring Atlantic salmon?
I can speak to it, and I'll use Kahal as well when it comes to the biology and domestication and fish farming and biosecurity questions. But Atlantic salmon, if you eat farmed salmon, it's Atlantic salmon. There are no wild fisheries of Atlantic salmon. That is the species that has been cultivated. That's what you see in the market. That's where you find good egg sources. You see a couple of smaller farms that do Kohol. But you know, it's not domesticated. It's not developed to be farmed at this scale. And since the facility in itself is, you know, has a high level of biosecurity and escape prevention, we think, you know, for us, it's the right choice to do because that's where the market is. And we are also replacing our, you know, business case is to replace. What we haven't said is that ninety percent of the fresh fish and Atlantic salmon eaten in the US is imported by air freight.
So where else, besides Norway and Denmark, do you have these facilities?
We have facilities in, two facilities in Denmark and one in Norway. And we have a proposed facility in Maine, too. That's the little head of California facility.
And you said you're going to have a hundred and fifty employees. What is the projected annual payroll for those hundred and fifty? What would be the average wage that a worker would make in one of your facilities?
Well, that's always a market assessment. But it is a well-paying job with benefits.
I imagine there's some very well-paid people because you have a lot of scientists and veterinarians and all that. But the bulk of the local workers, what would...
It will vary. It's in the fish farming part of it. It's very require, you know, education. I can't give you a specific number because it's always, you know, based on the current market. But it's comparable to any other, you know, jobs that you would have with education and good-paying jobs. So I would say you probably start at fifty-ish. But you know, that depends on when you're done.
Start at what? I didn't...
I would say probably around, you know, forty-five to fifty as a starting salary for some of these jobs. You have processing jobs that are maybe slightly less, but they're all livable wages. So, and there will fill benefits, all of them. But the final, we want to be competitive. We want to get a good, stable workforce. And to ensure that you don't have turnover, you want to make sure that you pay them, you know, a decent salary and you have a good benefit program. But you know, wages are crazy right now. So it's hard to determine what it's going to be like in five years.
And you were talking about hiring local, not just bringing in your workforce from somewhere else?
There is an assessment in the EIR that says of the hundred and fifty, I think probably up to ten percent at the most will come from the outside, like experts like Nick and Kahal, for example. But we also have, we did the assessment, and we've seen that there's a lot of good competence in, you know, in the community, too, that can be trained. And since we are proposing to build a main facility before the California facility, we will have the opportunity of exchanging knowledge and competence and training people and utilizing that as well. So, for example, both, you know, Nick and Kahal belong to our main farm, but also have the responsibility of ensuring that we acquire and train the rights, you know, skills and here, too.
And so you've, obviously, I didn't attend any meetings, but you've also taken input on impacts to our wild fisheries that we have here, our wild salmon. And you don't see any impacts at all?
I think I'm going to leave that to Nick. Do you want to speak to that? Impact on wild fisheries or Kahal?
Well, the question about Atlantic salmon, Atlantic salmon are domesticated. They've been bred for decades, many generations, for good performance, disease resistance, low maturation rates, low feed conversion. All these kind of performance traits and welfare traits. They've been grown in these kinds of RAS systems for a long time, for the most part, to the smolt stage I was telling you guys about earlier, which is a hundred grams. And now we're seeing in the last ten years, as the technology has improved and the economics of, you know, building at scale has made it feasible, we're seeing in the last ten years a lot of these kinds of facilities producing Atlantic salmon. So the point is, we have a lot of experience now with growing that species, whereas we wouldn't have as much experience, at least on scale, growing other species of fish. And in terms of biological damage, honestly, I don't see it as being a major risk because of all of the things I was telling you about earlier, the barriers to prevent fish from escaping the facility, which is really the main route that they could do some biological damage. Another point to make is we're growing all-female salmon. So in the very unlikely event that they did escape, and I mean extremely unlikely event, they're not going to survive. And there have been studies done that have shown that domesticated Atlantic salmon don't do very well in the wild because they're domesticated and they're trained to feed on a pelleted diet. So they don't tend to do so well in the wild. And there have been many attempts, actually in thirty-four states, including California, Oregon, Washington, to introduce salmon into the wild on many, many occasions. And none of them have been successful. So in that sense, I don't see there being a major risk if they did escape. But as I mentioned in my presentation, we have all these safeguards, all these barriers, all these things in place that make it almost impossible for them to leave our facility.
I bet you had a tsunami.
But as we try to show as well, the facility is designed for a tsunami. So we have engineered the facility to withstand a tsunami.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Thomas has his hand up. Go ahead, Thomas.
So I just wanted, I heard Mr. Newman do an ex parte. So this would be the appropriate time, is that correct, Chair?
Yes.
So ex parte disclosure, I did a site visit at the old pulp mill site. There is staff from the project. It was so long ago, I honestly can't remember. And it was like my first public event, like, since COVID. So there was a lot of people there. And we just, there was other commissioners there, so nothing specific other than the proposed project. And then at some point in time, I mean, I've been asked by numerous people, and I tell even my wife, I don't have an opinion on the project. You know, I'm just waiting for all the facts to come out, and then we'll analyze them. And then I ran into, at a rock show, one of the local people that worked for Nordic. And we didn't talk about the project at all. Just talked about rocks. My son was at a rock show. So that's all my interactions. And then a question I have for the applicants. I remember at the site visit, it's proposed that all the hazardous waste is going to be removed. And in the hypothetical event, five years after they're operational and their company ceases to exist, I remember being told verbally that there would be no hazardous waste left on the site. Is that still correct or incorrect?
So as we do the demolition, we'll remove all the hazardous materials that are still on-site. So that's mainly lead and asbestos that's in all of the buildings. There's been a long history of environmental investigations at the site. So we have a pretty good idea, in broad strokes, that there's not like a site-wide contamination issue with the soil or the groundwater. But we never know what's in between the drill holes. So we're fully expecting some surprises when we're doing the demolition. And anything we find that's contaminated will not be put back into the ground. Oh, and then, yeah, if we were to leave the site, there wouldn't be hazardous waste left behind by us. We do use some water treatment chemicals in our processes. But, you know, those would all be stored and disposed of properly.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff or the applicant from the commission? All right, seeing none. I will open this up for public comment. I'm only going to keep public comment open for about twenty minutes, though. So hopefully, we can get through it because... Pardon me? Oh, I did not see him. I apologize if I... Brian, if you were, go ahead. It didn't show him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask if it would be possible to get a copy of the additional slide materials that they offered just to be emailed to me. I don't need it presented tonight. And I did want to ask, when is the proposed construction phase planning on starting? And when are you planning on being operational? Thank you.
Well, first, we need to obtain our permits, which I anticipate will, you know, will hopefully get in twenty-two. And... I said, is this working? Yeah. I, we need to obtain our permits before we can, you know, do the final planning. We hope that we will do that within, you know, twenty-two, within the next months. The, I think the earliest, you know, it's fair to say the earliest we can start demolition would be the fall of twenty-three because we have to, we have to stay away from birds and bad season. And there's also, you know, a lot of planning that goes into it, both from a business side, but also from, you know, getting contractors in place and plan for it. Demolition could take anywhere from six to nine months. And after that, there is a ground densification program that could take five to six months as well. So we're talking, you know, probably, I would say, twenty, early twenty-five at least, until we can, you know... you know, start building and constructing the facilities themselves. But everything is up to final decision and timeline, and we also need to make sure that it's aligned with our main facility. So, but yeah, it will take a few years until we start construction. And construction takes about two years after we have done the remediation and ground densification. Yeah, but you put fish in or eggs in after, yeah, 13, 14 months, and then it takes 22 months to grow. So we're talking, you know, at best, you know, five years until we have fish in the market, I would assume. So, you know, it takes a while, and they build it in phases. It will be built in at least two phases. So you build phase one, the blue buildings, and then you add the phase two. And that's important because it takes time to build up what we call biomass and make sure that, you know, the facility works properly and that you are compliant with all the different, you know, conditions and criteria. And, and, and so by the time it's fully operational, I think we're probably in the next decade with a full biomass.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more questions from the commission, I'm going to open this up for a very short time. There's only one hand up, but I think that'll change for public comments. So the first public speaker is Ashley Teeter.
Hello, we just had a couple of quick questions, if you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Like I read that like in 2017 in Denmark, like a similar operation had like a total die-off of its stock. And I know you were talking about, you know, very elaborate safety concerns or protocols, but like, are you guys prepared for something unfortunate like that does happen? It won't like permanently impact your operation? And then also, I just wanted to ask if any of the fish being produced are genetically modified? And if the vaccines being used on them, if any of those are mRNA or gene altered or have those characteristics? Thanks, that's it.
Okay, I'll answer, you know, some of them, and then Nick will do. No answers?
Oh, go ahead.
No, they will not be genetically modified. We are not using that kind of fish. When it comes to the die-out in, die-off in Denmark, it's a different company, different process, different, and we have a clean record with no die-offs or any kind of major incidences or disease outbreaks. When it comes to, as Khal spoke to, and Nick as well, these are compartments. You have 26 different farms within, you know, completely biosecure units. So you would never see, most likely you wouldn't see a die-off of the whole facility if you detected something. And I'll leave the rest of the questions to the experts.
Okay, is there any other public that wishes to speak on this?
Scott Fraser from Blue Lake, you have received a very sophisticated public relations pitch. The unfortunate part of this is ill-timed, because as your staff commented, you have not received any comments to the responses to either the initial study, which was withdrawn, or the draft EIR. I'd like to jump ahead to two of the questions that were asked and were answered in what I believe was incomplete fashion. When Commissioner O'Neill asked about impacts on wild fish, they were primarily addressing what escapement might potentially affect Pacific salmon. But there was no mention of the protein to feed these fish coming from the Pacific Ocean. And I forget what the conversion rate is, but it's much more than 25 metric tons to produce 25 metric tons of product. So the removal of that protein is important. Also, the response, the answer to the question about timing of permits was, I believe, unrealistic, bi optimistic one or two years, because the Harbor Commission has not obtained the permit for the saltwater intake, and the studies that the Coastal Commission is requiring will not be completed until 2023. So one of my primary concerns is saltwater intakes, which are very problematic, they're not functional, and have not been used in over a decade. These are not existing facilities. I believe that referring to them as existing saltwater intakes is a misnomer. At best, it is unintentional, but at worst, it's blatantly misleading. The DIR uses a piecemeal approach to the saltwater intakes by saying it's not us, Nordic, it's the Harbor Commission. However, the Harbor Commission has had more than two years to apply for permits, knowing that those saltwater intakes were important. And again, they will not have the data required to obtain a Coastal Commission permit for another year at least. Piecemeal approach to a project, as you and your staff probably know, is not allowed under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. There are no reasonable assumptions that the Harbor Commission can get a permit for a withdrawal of 10 million gallons per day, because we don't know what the adverse impacts are yet, but the potential adverse impacts to Dungeness crab, herring, and other commercially important fisheries is significant. And these were many of the comments received in the 240-some letters that were received. There is no pump at the Red Tank Dock. As the photograph showed, those were intended simply to be trash screens at the mill site when those pumps were put into the 1960s. They were not designed for the entrainment and impingement of fisheries. So this idea that
You have 10 seconds.
I'll be, just a moment. You've given the
I'll cut you off if you don't, if you go over the time, so.
The DIR claims that reduced environmental impacts will occur with this project. That is false. There will be increased environmental impacts due to impingement and entrainment. Thank you very much.
So it's 8:44. I said I was going to close this at 8:45, so we could get back to the other. I know we have one more, but I'm not going to start it. We're going to have many meetings on this, there will be lots of time. I apologize that everybody didn't get to speak, but there's a lot on the agenda, and this was thrown as a curveball to move it forward today, okay? I apologize for the people that have been waiting. I apologize to Nordic for this being a short presentation. I know you've got a lot invested here, but we are going to move on. So this will come back to us. This was just a workshop. We don't, we're not taking any action or anything on it.
That is correct, Chair, but could I ask the commission's indulgence to continue the workshop to allow anybody who's here tonight who wants to comment to provide comment at a later date?
Okay, do you have a date in mind, or you just want to put uncertain? I didn't figure we were going to have to do that because we knew it would be coming back at some point, but I'm not, I don't have a problem with that either.
Could I recommend May 19th?
Okay. So can I get a motion to continue this, to come back to us at May 19th?
So moved?
I'll second it.
Yeah, I have a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Alan Bonju?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, Trip. Motion carries unanimous, this will come back to us. All right, to get back on track, we still had item number eight to the proposed communications facilities ordinance. And we'll go from there. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Michael Richardson here. Keenan is the assigned planner, and he's sick today, so I'm taking over for him. Your commission last heard this item on, at their April 7 meeting, and at that time, you asked staff to revise the ordinance to allow for a ministerial pathway for telecommunications facilities in the rural TPZ and AE zones for areas that, where the communities are underserved or unserved by telecommunications facilities. And so we have proposed a set of revisions to the ordinance, and those are outlined in the, or provided in the staff report. And basically what it says is new or modified non-small cell wireless facilities within a developed area of an existing permitted telecommunications facility in the AE and the TPZ zones are allowed as a tier-one facility, provided that it meets four performance measures. And those performance measures are, are conditions that the Department of, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife identified as important for making sure that there was not going to be harm to birds and other animal species as a result of the facilities. And so the facility needs to not result in the conversion of agricultural land or timberland to other uses. That's, that's more of a local issue, not a CDFW issue necessarily. The facility shall not exceed 150 feet in height, and all obstruction lighting uses only blinking lights, and the proposed tower does not use guy wires for support. So those, a revised ordinance with those performance measures has been included. We think that with these standards, the environmental impacts remain as qualified, the ordinance as exempt from environmental review. And so we are recommending your commission make all of the required findings and recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the revised ordinance.
Question, Mike? Go ahead. Wasn't there one further one about the backup power sources, Michael?
Yeah, thank you. We also, upon further consideration, identified a requirement that we had inserted for backup power for these facilities. And, and we had kind of aggressively inserted in there that all backup power needed to be renewable power, and it's, it's just not going to be feasible for these facilities to meet that standard. And so we are backing away from that and recommending that, but not requiring that these, that backup power for these facilities be sourced from renewable energy.
All right, Thomas, you have a question?
I apologize for even asking, because I know we're busy, but I heard this was from CDFW. How do they have jurisdiction over, A, the proposed facility does not result in conversion of any agricultural land or timberland? I thought that's more of a local county thing, and just clarification on that.
Yeah, thank you. That was a confusing part of my presentation. The conversion of ag land and timberland is really a local issue. That's not something that CDFW was promoting. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff before I open this for public? Seeing none, I will now open the public comment on this item. It looks like we have one. Ashley Teeter. Go ahead.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Remembering what occurred in the last meeting, just that the planning commission, you're not, you know, making any real decisions, you're making more recommendations, seemed like you'd said to the Board of Supervisors for, it was like, I mean, seems like you kind of had your hands tied. Like the supplemental information in the, off the agenda, like item five, it stated that the planning commission must make a decision based on staff and the public testimony, but then also skipping it says that like because of a CEQA item, that like all that, your decision is exempt from that. So you're basically not supposed to consider the staff report or the public opinion and just pretty much agree with going forward with it? All seems kind of confusing with that language, but I just, I just say that with that in mind, maybe get a third party to do like a safety study, because if, what, who's telling you to do this is saying not to, you know, not to take health impact as concern and not to listen to the public, then like getting a third party to review health and safety might be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Director, you'd like to address that?
Sure, thank you, Chair. So number one, the commission has the ability to make a recommendation based upon the testimony adherers in the staff report and from the public and in their own discretion. So the commission's hands are not tied. The place where the federal government preempts the local jurisdiction's ability to regulate something relative to telecommunications facilities is in the area of radio frequency. And so that's the health and safety concern that's being referenced. The federal government does limit the local jurisdiction's ability to set thresholds or deny facilities based upon that.
Thank you, Director. Is there any other public that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody in the audience that would come up to the mic if you have? Please come up to the mic if you want, wish to speak. You can form a line if there's multiple people. Please try to watch the timer and keep it to the three minutes, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Dana Quillman. I've been resident of Humboldt County for 41 years. I've seen a lot of government overreach in the last two, two and a half years from the pandemic, and I feel like this 5G thing is a part of a lot, more of this government overreach. We know that 4G is not healthy for us. We know that 5G is what, like 100 times worse than 4G? Just because the federal government tells our county or our cities to do something, maybe our local elected officials and planning commissions need to stand up to them and say no, because maybe they don't really care about us, knowing what kind of irradiation's going to happen. I don't want a 5G tower outside my bedroom window. I don't, I'm just getting my old meter back. I don't even want my meter anymore, the Wi-Fi meter, whatever it's called from PG&E. I don't even want that. I want to turn off Wi-Fi from my house every night. We know that this is not healthy technology, and why do we need it? Oh, so we can have faster gaming, so we can have AI, so they can turn off our car whenever they want someday, so they can have like ID surveillance system like they have in China, where they can like monitor our temperature at every moment and see where we are every moment and see what, every financial transaction we're making and every conversation we're making, take away all the landlines, then they'll take away the post office, then we'll be back to homing pigeons to have a conversation that's not surveilled. So I think that there's a bigger agenda about 5G, and it's, health is definitely a big part of it, but we need to look at what this is really about. This is about control of the population of the world. That's what it's about, and everybody needs to wake up to that's what it's about. We just saw how they could just freeze people's financial, freeze their bank accounts because there was dissent. Does anyone feel like our government was dissent. Does anyone feel like our government, is that trustworthy, worthy that we should be giving them this kind of power with this kind of technology? I don't trust our government enough to have hand over that kind of power. So I know that you're here for, for Planning Commission and, you know, but there's a bigger agenda here. And I think all, everybody, every citizen of the world needs to look at this, from health and also from controlling the population. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, our next, next speaker, please.
Perry Phillips. Hi, my name is Perry Phillips. I'm, I have these pieces of paper that, what I'm going to read from, so I just pulled that. I'm supposed to print up some for you all. First of all, I wanted to mention, you know, you're saying the federal government can't really, has limited your ability to act. I don't think that's really true. And I think you should look into this. What we do know from scholars that have examined this issue, and again, this is part of my written statement, is the FCC is a, is a captured agency. It works for the telecom corporations it's supposed to regulate, but it's incumbent upon local governments to ultimately defend our inhabitants, as you refer to them, from the trepidations of these corporations, should they, you know, have their way with government. Then at the federal level, as they have with the FCC, then it's incumbent upon local communities to stand up to the telecom industry and say, hey, you know, these, this is a radically new technology. It's very, very different than 4G or 3G. The wavelength is completely different in, in its ability to harm human health and the natural environment. I will mention more frequency pollution, impact of 5G radiation on the skin, dangers to heart health, vision problems, reduced bacterial resistance, danger to ecosystem disruption, danger of ozone disruption, crop and plant health risks, cell growth, depression, and other severe concerns due to 5G radiation. With failure of the federal regulation agency, the FCC, to evaluate these hazards effectively and to take a nonpartisan approach and a non-corporate approach to these problems, we can see that communities like Los Altos, California, has had to prohibit installation of small cells on public utility easements in residential neighborhoods, now requires a 500-foot setback from schools. Petaluma, California, has set a distance for small cell tower that can be placed near a residential home, no more than 500 feet from that home. In Mill Valley, 500 feet again was a norm that some of the local communities have taken. In San Diego, they've had to set a 300-foot limit for schools in, in the area. Walnut City, California, has also said 1,500 feet. So, you know, if you look at the studies that have been done on this, it's very, it's very scary. And I would recommend, since you all are part of this planning process, to do a little more research than you've done so far. And to maybe take a look at Arthur Furstenberg's book, The Invisible Rainbow. If we're really concerned about human health, you have to become scholars. You can't just become, you can't just be bureaucrats, sitting around approving things and rubber stamping everything that comes for, before you, even if it's, you know, even if it becomes the norm around you, you still have to maintain an independence if you really care about people and the environment. And that's what I would beg you to do, is to become scholars on this subject, since you are advising the Board of Supervisors on an action that they cannot take back once it starts rolling out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If anybody has anything to hand to us, just give it to Cliff over here, and he'll get them up to us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on this very, very, very critical subject. I know we're all tired. It's been a long day. But I really ask for your most direct attention, as I really feel that this is a matter of life and death. And I'm going to try to stay composed, but this is something I feel so strongly about, and I would genuinely give my life. That's how strong I feel about the subject. My name is Debbie Parker. I have lived in Arcata for over 30 years. Like everyone of you, I deeply care about the health and well-being of our community. I have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours in the last 10 years researching electromagnetic pollution. I consider myself a canary in the coal mine. I am very, very sensitive to electric pollution, and I'm very adversely affected by it. Radiation emitted by 5G is absorbed by the body and is cumulative. It may increase cancer risks in humans and animals. It can interfere with human reproduction. It may cause headaches, fatigue, and cognitive dysfunction. It may harm the immune system. Right now, there are unresolved concerns. I cannot say this emphatically enough. There is too much unknown. And no one, no one here in this room has enough information to make an informed decision. This is a massive, massive experiment on humans and animals and other species. The radiation from 5G will not be confined, and we need to be careful when we expose an entire community to it. In the past, lots of other health, health effects from environmental agents were disregarded at first, such as DDT, pesticides, herbicides, smoking, and many others. Even my own parents, when I was young, were encouraged to smoke by their doctors. And now we look back on that with absolute horror and shock. But that was the norm back then. I don't want 5G to be the norm, and especially not in my beloved Humboldt County. Lots of other cities in the US and other countries have halted 5G. There is a good reason why they have done this. And I'm going to point this, I hope this is okay, but to John Ford, because I believe the buck stops with you, Mr. Ford. And I implore you, I beseech you, to not just be doing what's easy or listening to the money aspects, but to look down to seven generations.
You have 10 seconds.
Your children, your grandchildren, please do not rubber stamp this. Please do your due diligence, due diligence and homework. And halt 5G in Humboldt County. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you.
The previous people who talked, talked about a lot of things I was going to talk about. My name is Susan Vaughn. I've lived in Humboldt County for 45 years. And I too am very, very concerned about Humboldt County. And it astounds me, we're not supposed to talk about the health effects of Wi-Fi in general. It's astounding to me. Why is that so, when it is so deleterious to our health? I'm going to help you understand why Wi-Fi is deleterious to our health. So to understand why, why Wi-Fi is so harmful, you must understand the nature of radio waves. So as you know, radio waves have amplitude, right? So AM and FM radio waves are relatively tall. They don't really affect us much because their, their resonance is very different than what's going on in the human body. But when we get into Wi-Fi, we're talking about millimeter waves that are going through our body. And as you know, the body is electrical in nature. We've got these meridians that go through the body. That's all been proven. And we also have brainwaves. We also have heart rhythms that are all controlled by electricity. So, so with each generation of Wi-Fi, those waves have gotten shorter and shorter and shorter and shorter. And so 5G is 100 times more toxic than 4G, simply because it is very, very similar to the electrical vibration of the body. And so you guys have heard of the law of resonance. It's a physical law in physics, right? So the law of resonance states that when two or more energies are vibrating at differing rates of speed, either the higher one will descend, the lower one will rise, or the two will meet in the middle. So what that means is these Wi-Fi, 5G, will be impacting our biorhythms, not just in humans, but also in plants, animals, insects. You probably already know that bees can't navigate. They, they get lost. They can't find their hives because of the, they, they navigate by the electromagnetic lines of the earth. Also migrating birds, which we have many of in Humboldt County. And so this is going to have tremendous health impact. And just the last thing I want to say is I am 70 years old. I do not take any pharmaceutical drugs whatsoever. I have not been diagnosed with any chronic diseases, because I care about my health. And I don't want to be forced to be submitted to these harmful, toxic waves. I do not have Wi-Fi in my home. My entire house is wired with ethernet cords. I do not use it, and I refuse it. And I do not want this affecting my children, my grandchildren, and unborn children. It's absolutely outrageous.
No, no clapping, please. Let's keep, come on. We're trying to get through all this.
Hello, my name is Katie. I own and operate vacation rentals in Myrtle Town. Tourism is an important economy in Humboldt County, and one that I think we can grow as a significant source of revenues. People travel here from all over the planet to bask in our world-class natural beauty. This year, I am excited to develop an ecotour program featuring hikes of our local gems. In my opinion, 5G will detour tourism and negatively impact our struggling economy. First of all, the infrastructure of 5G is ugly. No one wants to look at high-tech devices attached to our gorgeous Victorians. This town is adorable. We have murals all over the place and have spent much dollars creating a beautiful historic downtown. 5G is unsightly and sends the message that we are willing to compromise our aesthetics in the name of allowing corporations unrestricted access to our community, and that is not attractive to tourists. Aesthetics are important, and other communities have successfully restricted 5G based on this. Mill Valley, California, and Rehova Beach, Delaware, both said no to the installation of towers in their beautiful communities. And Verizon removed existing towers when Dewey Beach, Delaware residents complained they blocked the ocean view. No one wants to see cell towers intermixed with redwoods. I hear that cutting is being done in the Rockefeller Forest, home to the tallest tree that tourists can walk to. These trees are our greatest resource and a worldwide attraction. They also protect us from rising temperatures by trapping moisture and giving us shade, not to mention that they are seniors of thousands of years. By compromising our precious redwoods, we compromise our impact on tourists. I ask for an environmental impact assessment and an economic impact assessment of 5G on tourism and the redwoods. Thank you. 5G also affects bird migratory patterns. Many tourists come here for the birds. Godwit Days is a tourist attraction that won't exist without godwits. What is the economic impact of that? The marsh in Arcata is a bird sanctuary and attracts birds from all around the world. Our great blue herons are magnificent. If we plaster 5G and have no birds, there will be no birding tourists. I ask for this to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yeah, my name is Ryan Holcomb. I've been a Humboldt County resident for 20 years. And this is the first time I've spoken in front of the planning commission or the supervisors, that I feel this is a very important issue that is not being looked at enough. I'll just get to write to some of the points on facts about 5G. So when we sleep, our delta brainwave state is 1 to 4 hertz or waves per second. Our theta dream state is 4 to 8 hertz waves or waves per second. Our alpha state in the flow is 8 to 12 hertz per second. And the Schumann resonance or healing pulse of the earth is 7.2 hertz waves per second. The routers, our Wi-Fi routers in our homes are 2.5 billion waves per hertz or waves per second. And so are our cell phones. And 5G towers are 60, 60 to 90 billion waves per second. It's 10 zeros faster than, than how we sleep. Level one of, level one of EMF and the cognitive stuff, this affects, affects memory, focus, behavior, fatigue, anxiety, stress, headaches. It's absolutely detrimental for kids, which is being rolled out around schools everywhere. Level two of EMF is muscle twitching, nosebleeds, migraines, poor sleep, teeth grinding, nausea, shortness of breath, and weakness. And level three is cancer, diabetes, Alzheimer's, cardiovascular health, and fertility. Keep in mind, there is a massive 5G tower that has been installed right across from the planning and building department that has not been turned on yet. And I'm pretty sure you guys will know when that is turned on. Robert F. Kennedy Jr. and the Children's Health Defense Network has just won a lawsuit against the FCC. Our own government shows studies over several decades of how, how dangerous it is. A Berkeley professor sued the California Department of Public Health and won. They had to publish the results, which were EMF being classified as a class two carcinogen, and showed is directly related to cancer and acoustic nerves, decreased sperm count, headaches affecting learning, memory, hearing, behavior, and sleep. The Bioinitiative Org, they have showed, or they have done 3,500 studies from 40 countries, 250 scientists, and they have loads of information on this topic, if you want to look into this further. In the first trimester of pregnant women, it showed that the fetus is, is the most sensitive. That's when it's in the developmental state, or that's when the developmental DNA in the cells can change permanently. The next generation will show the problems and studies that in three generations out, they will not be able to produce, reproduce at all. In Singapore, with 5G, they've had 31% decrease in birth rate from 2016 to 2017. This is from a doctor. One digital x-ray is equal to two, a 30-year-old film x-ray. 3G is equal to 800 rays in over 24 hours, 800 x-rays in over 24 hours. 4G is equal to 600 x-rays in over 24 hours. And 5G is equal to 100 times 4G. That's 100 times.
You have to wrap it up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carsten Larson. I live in Blue Lake, and I'm raising two kids. And I'm very concerned about, you know, bringing in microwave bioweapons. We've already dealt with the, the bioweapons being injected into us, and now we have to deal with more irresponsibility on the part of our government. So yeah, the main thing I want to remind everybody is that microwave energy was developed as a, as a weapon, and it's still used as a weapon today. It was not created to warm your coffee or pop your popcorn or heat your dinner. It's a weapon and can be used as such whenever the people in control of it want to. For some reason, the powers that be find it necessary to put one of these 5G towers at every street corner. No safety testing is necessary, because we all know we can trust the authorities. How am I, as a father, supposed to accept these towers are safe? There's been no safety testing, and cities are not allowed to refuse. This reminds me of DDT, nuclear power, dioxin, and everybody's favorite glyphosate. My belief is the safety tests have not been done, because the authorities know that they will not pass. My belief is that the elites, like Bill Gates and Klaus Schwab, want the ability to kill us at will. You may think that I'm paranoid or a conspiracy theorist, but I'm just asking questions. Why is there no safety testing? And why are we not allowed to say I'd like to end by asking this one question. If there was a plan for mass genocide, how would things look any different than? If there was a plan for mass genocide, how would things look any different than they do right now?
My name is Lori Birdsall. I've been a resident of Arcata for over 40 years. I'm grateful for this opportunity to be able to give comment under our rights of the Constitution. I'm a professional massage therapist. I serve people by helping their bodies release pain and find ease. My job is demanding, just as your job is demanding, is demanding in safeguarding our community. This streamlined Tier 1 process you are purporting is set up to block public comment and forego the process of environmental impact. This violates our inalienable rights under the Constitution. I want to speak to the ethics of this project. You have the duty and oath to serve and protect the people of this county, allowing 5G cell towers, which will be right next to an elementary school, by the way. James Road and Foster is maybe 300 feet from Fuente Nueva Charter School. I don't know if you've seen that on the map or looked it up, but you should. This 5G right next to the school will harm the children and the adults who work there. Do you want to be accomplice to this, to doing harm to our children? Your hands are not tied by this federal insurgency. We, as a republic, have the right to oppose procedures that violate our rights for life, liberty, and well-being. With the authority and power invested in you, are you going to protect our community? Our children, our beloved environment, are you going to protect our community? Are you going to draw the line against 5G invasion? PG&E does not have the right to decimate our redwoods. We have worked long and hard to preserve them. Already Rockefeller Grove has been attacked and scathed. I urge you to judge morally and ethically... If you are enticed by monetary gain from federal agencies and private companies, please remember who it is you are in service to. We do not need their money. We need our health. We need our freedom. We need to be able to protect our children, our children's children. We need you to do your jobs so that we can do ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience here that wishes to speak? All right. We've got one more call in, so Public 7224, go ahead. Star 6 to unmute, please.
Hello, yes, I'm a Humboldt County resident, and I do not support any of this 5G business. I definitely support all of the last speakers, and this definitely needs to be looked into. If it was a basic, simple cellphone tower that gave communication, that would be fine. We already have plenty around the county, maybe just a few more of those simple ones so we have communication would be good. But this new 5G business is definitely not good, and it's very environmentally damaging. So that being said, I do not support this project. Bye.
Thank you. Please, no clapping. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Then come... When I asked for you to be up at the mic, you should have came up at that time.
Hello, my name is Moon Sai Alicia Thompson, and I'm going to keep it short and sweet and just let you know that I personally do not consent of the installation of the 5G technology. And I know I speak on behalf of many of other people in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? See none. I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to the commission. I see there's already one hand up. Thomas.
So my question, I mean, I think everyone that spoke, but my question, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, the health is... According to the federal guidelines, our regulations, we can only look at land use and implications, and when it comes to health, that is not in our purview. Is that still correct or incorrect?
Michael, do you want to take that? Or Director, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I can respond to that. The federal government is occupying a lot of the regulatory field for cell towers and communication facilities, and local regulations are prohibited from regulating radiation emitted from telecommunications facilities, and that is a distinguishing feature of the 5G network is its radiation.
Thank you for that. That's what I remembered from the last one. So with that, based on the evidence in the staff report and public testimony, make all the required findings and adapt the attached resolution recommending that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors find that the proposed ordinance exempt from CEQA pursuant to 15307 and 15308 of the state CEQA guidelines and adopt the proposed Wireless Telecommunications Facilities Ordinance along with its related zoning code amendments.
All right. Thank you, Thomas. So we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion on that motion?
Well, if we can't regulate how many feet away these 5G towers are, how is it that these other communities have set distances from schools and what have you? Some of them say 1,500 feet, some are 300, 500. How does that get into a regulation if you can't regulate?
Michael, have we looked at that? Have we looked to see what findings or what they've done?
Yeah, through the chair, there are communities that have established setbacks specifically from schools. The proposed ordinance establishes a setback of at least 50 feet from a residential building. And to my knowledge, even though these other jurisdictions with the setbacks from schools may have been challenged, those ordinances persist. Many of them are active and are being used to permit facilities. And so that is an option for the commission to consider is would you like to establish a certain setback distance from schools? We did not include that in the draft ordinance, but that is available to your commission. The key is that we're prohibited from allowing a carrier to fill a gap in service. These 5G facilities tend to operate at a distance of 500, about 500 feet to the next facility. And so if you establish a 500-foot setback from a school, for instance, in theory, that's not going to create an insurmountable gap of service that would jeopardize the validity of the ordinance.
Okay. Director, yep.
I'd just like to add to what Mr. Richardson said. If it is of interest to the commission to explore setbacks, I think we would want to, before the commission takes any action, to do some research and find out what kind of legal findings they made to support that and see how it fits within the federal regulations and guidelines, and would like you to be completely aware of any decision that you're making before taking any action.
I think that's a good idea, and...
Please, no clapping, please. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Would the maker of the motion and the second be willing to rescind their motion and second and ask if that come back? Or do you want to call for a vote on your motion and second?
We've had this ordinance before us. I think this is number four. Last time we were going to just pass... Last time we had it before us, we were going to pass it on to the Board of Supervisors without bringing it back to us. So I'd be willing to add to my motion to recommend potential setbacks to schools as the Board of Supervisors sees fit and let them deal with it three or four hearings there rather than have two more hearings in front of the commission. Those are my thoughts, but I don't know about the second or...
That's a good point. How about the second? What are your thoughts, Brian?
I concur.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor.
So to be clear, the modified motion was recommended approval with the additional stipulations for staff to investigate the ability to apply setbacks for consideration by the board.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you for saying that, Tom. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, and thanks, Peggy. That's what I was going to ask as well. So it's a good point to bring forward there, and I think going forward is the correct way to do this as the motion is on the floor.
All right. Any other discussion? See none. Trip, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Alan Bondjo?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Thomas Mulder? Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, Trip. So the motion carries 4 to 1 to send this on to the supervisors. So everybody, you'll have your chance to voice your opinions and your thoughts to the supervisors, and I hope you do. All right. Thank you very much on this one. All right. We're at 9:30. I feel really bad for the Nava Ranch people. I think there's a few of them that came here from, all the way from out in the petroleum area. I'm willing to stay if anybody else is willing to stay, but on the same note, I think this could go for a while and... But if it does go, if we're going to continue this, I want it to be the first thing on the agenda next time so these people get their... Go ahead, Mike.
And I think we should allow them to speak on what is here without any presentation ahead of time.
Yeah, I think that's... I think that would be at least a fair thing to do. So if there is anybody who is here for the Nava Ranch Incorporated special permit in the Honeydew area, and they would like to speak on this item, we will let you have your three minutes, but we will not take any action on it tonight. It'll be continued and brought back to us. Director?
I was just going to maybe introduce the possibility that if people are here and everybody speaks to it and the commission's comfortable taking an action tonight.
Well, I guess we could do that. I just figured we'd have more... It'd take longer, but if we're there, I would...
I just simply wouldn't preclude...
Yeah, that's a good point. I was getting ahead of things, so... Do we need to have a staff report then if we're going to...
Yeah, abbreviated.
Nobody at...
The staff report's a long one.
Okay, I'm being told the staff report's going to be 20 minutes long, so... See, that's... I knew... I'm going to... Here's what we're going to do, because things have been just haywire tonight. We're going to let the people speak, and we're going to bring it back at the next meeting, and then we can have a staff report then. And if anybody wants to come back, they can. If new speakers want to come, they can, but we're not going to...
Or zoom in.
Yeah, or zoom in. So we're going to give anybody who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward and speak now.
Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Maureen Catalina, and I appreciate you putting it off for two weeks. Everyone's tired, and I feel like the public's not going to call in at this hour, and it's okay with me if I drive back because it's very important to me. It affects me profoundly. I've turned in my letters and my... The first time for the March 17th meeting, and I sent in another letter. I still feel the same way about the first one. I hope you've read it. If you have not, please do. The second staff report, which is nine pages long, the first one was 82. I'm sorry, I'm going to use a word as farce, but regardless, my biggest concern, because if you can please read my letters, I don't have to touch on those right now. What I would like to say is, public comment is incredibly important for this. And in the staff report, I was very upset that my neighbors and I were singled out in a way that would make the reader question our credibility. I feel like it was done to sway the jury, if you will. This was done to both the BLM and to a prominent local consultant agency. We were insulted personally, and here's an actual... I have letters if anyone wants them. The BLM wrote to the Planning Department and said, "The county did not send us a request for input that we are aware. However, we did become informed by a concerned neighbor surrounding a recent Planning Commission meeting." This is the response from Cliff Johnson. "This actually went to a hearing a few weeks ago, and the Planning Commission continued it so we could investigate allegations of county violations by the adjacent landowners. We were able to verify that the allegations appear to be unfounded and can get you some information about this project and the allegations. In particular, we found light shielding in good working order and generator to be fully compliant. By the way, BLM did not respond to the original application, and this current application was referred to BLM on 4/26/21. With no response as yet received, coincidentally, we found that the adjacent property owners' cannabis applications are currently in violation and are working to address those issues." If you're going to say that my reports to the County Planning Commission are unfounded, which means no foundation or basis in facts, that's an insult. I'm here to help you guys. I sent in photographs. I can hear generators. I'm reporting to you. I am no other reason. I have been berated on several levels throughout the letter, and so have my neighbors, stating that we owe money to the county, that we're in other violations with the Water Board. I have 25 seconds. These are false allegations, and they're throughout the staff report. So either the staff report can get rewritten, but it's unfair. It scares people from calling in. If they're going to point out the property owners that live nearby, what are they going to do to the general public? Check on their parking tickets? It's unbelievable, and I don't feel like it's fair. Please read my letters also because they address the science. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Evelyn DeValt, and I live in Honeydew. I've lived on top of the mountain in Honeydew for 45 years. And the greatest asset of my property is the view. This project is directly in my view and taints the natural beauty and serenity of the landscape. It has a negative effect on my property's value. I worry about the environmental impact of the land, the water, the flora, and the fauna. There are already too many greenhouses close by this proposed project. 12 more big greenhouses and other buildings? It needs to stop, and I'm totally against this project, and I ask you all to please vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this? I see there's one caller. So let me get... Sorry, I'm slow at this. Sorry, I'm slow at this. Steve Conselvy, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, I'm the previous owner of the Nava Ranch property. It belonged to a friend of mine who sold it to me and he had gotten it from his grandparents who got the property in 1930. When I was selling it, I wanted to find someone who would appreciate the land and someone who deserved to move on to the property and that was them. From day one, they made the property aesthetically better and it was noticed by myself and others who are familiar with the property. That made me realize I sold it to the right person. Pretty much, he needs the square footage so he can make up for the crashing cannabis prices and be able to keep the property going. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? 7224, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I'm a Honeydew member here and I just don't know what to say, guys. Another big grow going down. This is totally against pretty much the majority of Humboldt County citizens' wishes and actually voting. A lot of this we talked about in 2017, 2016, 2015 when this is all coming down the pipe. Nobody wanted big grows. And so basically, it's coming down to the board of supervisors and the commission arguing against the people on these big grows. Now, a couple things. There is golden eagle habitat in this area. There is bald eagle habitat. I have pictures of both. And it just doesn't fit the area. In fact, the board of supervisors keep saying, "Oh, no expansion in the wildlands." So it's just kind of like reiterating the same stuff and nobody seems to listen. So thank you for your time and please start working for the people. Have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. We can, we said we were going to continue this, so we need to continue this.
I'll also move to continue this item.
I'll second it.
To the next meeting, correct? Director?
Yes, to May 5th and you're continuing with the public hearing open.
Yes, thank you. All right. With that, is there anything else?
Which one do you want, first and second?
First.
So, I think Peggy was second, I'm sorry. Trip, a roll call on that, please.
Absolutely. Peggy, you're second, right? You're second on the floor. All righty. Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
And Alan Bondjo?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimous. Anything else, Director?
Just wanted to ask for feedback on the maps. We did make some improvements to those and was wondering if those looked a little better with the roads and the different symbols, the different colors.
They did look better.
Easier to see.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that. So with that, nothing else, I...
Hey, Chair, before you adjourn, I'm going to make a motion. Chair? Chair Bondjo?
Yes, go ahead.
We didn't continue the Bloxburg Family Farm project, did we, or did I miss that?
Yeah, it was continued earlier. Didn't we?
That's not on consent. It's part of public hearing.
I think we jumped over that and did not continue that. I...
Good catch then, Thomas. You're the man. All right. So, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to continue it to May 5th.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
The motion's second, any discussion? Seeing none?
Did you open the public hearing as they recommended, though?
Are you for real? Not you, Thomas.
Thomas, Mr. Mulder, Commissioner Mulder is following correct protocol right now.
Yep. In case there's somebody out there.
So, I will now open the public comment on the Bloxburg family, I don't have it in form. Farms project, yeah. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing nobody, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing nobody here either, we'll close the public comment. Now, I'll ask for the roll call vote on continuing it to...
All right.
Motion and a second.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Alan Bondjo?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, Trip. Motion carries unanimous. I see Thomas has his, is your hand back up, Thomas, about something else or was it just up for that?
I think I forgot to put it down.
Put it down, okay.
My apologies. I'm going to enjoy my two-minute commute, though, I'll tell you that.
Good for you. Thanks for catching that. That was a good one. I was thinking it went on consent, so I apologize. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. This was a long one.